Average monthly is 2,500. For three kids. Yeah. It's a little expensive. My twins will be five in November and then my daughter is a year and a half. Yep. Are we growing this out? I see that. I see. I see. I see. I see that. Hopefully, will it be just as white?
Fantastic.
All right, can you guys hear me? We're gonna be getting started shortly. Test, test, okay. Microphones are live. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, we're gonna be starting in just about one minute. We're just under one minute to start. Thirty seconds. Here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Nice to see everybody. Welcome back. Today is the meeting of the Cedric County Board of Commissioners, Wednesday, September 6. Before we start, I want to just give a thank you and a shout out to the over Labor Day weekend. We do have a number of departments that continue to serve our mission of providing services, 911, Sheriff, EMS. I'm probably leaving somebody out, but I just want to say thank you to all them, all those employees that served during the holiday weekend and continue our mission to provide good service. So, thank you and to you all. Okay, with that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Invitation to be led by Father Hayden Charles, St. Patrick Catholic Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
So, we'll begin with Psalm 139 this morning. I'll pray it in English and then in Spanish. Oh Lord, you search me and you know me. You yourself know my resting and my rising. You discern my thoughts from afar. You mark when I walk or lie down. You know all my ways through and through. Before ever a word is on my tongue, you know it, oh Lord, through and through. Behind and before you besieged me, your hand ever laid upon me. Too wonderful for me, this knowledge, too high beyond my reach. Oh, where can I go from your spirit? Or where can I flee from your face? If I climb the heavens, you are there. If I lie in the grave, you are there. If I take the wings of the dawn, or dwell at the sea's furthest end, even there, your hand would lead me. Your right hand would hold me fast. If I say, let the darkness hide me, and the light around me be night, even darkness is not dark to you. The night shall be as bright as day, and darkness the same as the light. For it was you who formed my inmost being, knit me together in my mother's womb. I thank you, who wonderfully made me. How wonderful are your works, which my soul knows well. My frame was not hidden from you, when I was being fashioned in secret and molded in the depths of the earth. Your eyes saw me yet unformed, and all days are recorded in your book, formed before one of them came into being. To me, how precious your thoughts, oh God, how great is the sum of them. If I count them, they are more than the sand. At the end, I am still at your side. Oh God, that you would slay the wicked, that men of blood would depart from me, which deceit they rebel against you, and set your designs at naught. Do I not hate those who hate you, abhor those who rise against you? I hate them with a perfect hate, and they are foes to me. Oh, search me, God, and know my heart. Oh, test me and know my thoughts. See that my path is not wicked, and lead me in the way everlasting. Señor, tú me examinas y conoces. Sabes si me siento o me levanto. Tú conoces de lejos lo que pienso. Ya esté caminando o en la cama me escudriñas. Eres testigo de todos mis pasos. Aún no está mi lengua la palabra cuando ya tú, señor, la conoces entera. Me aprietas por detrás y por delante y colocas tu mano sobre mí. Me supera ese prodigio de saber, son alturas que no puedo alcanzar. ¿A dónde iré lejos de tu espíritu? ¿A dónde huiré lejos de tu rostro? Si escaló los cielos, tú allí estás. Si me acuesto entre los muertos, ahí también estás. Si le piro las alas a la aurora para irme a la otra orilla del mar, también allá tu mano me conduce y me tiene tomado tu derecha. Si digo entonces qué me oculten, al menos las tinieblas y la luz se haga noche sobre mí. Más para ti ni son oscuras las tinieblas y la noche es luminosa como el día. Pues eres tú quien formó mis riñones, quien me tejió en el seno de mi madre. Te doy gracias por tantas maravillas, admirables son tus obras y mi alma bien lo sabe. Mis huesos no te estaban ocultos cuando yo era formado en el secreto o bordado en lo profundo de la tierra. Tus ojos veían todos mis días, todos ya estaban escritos en tu libro y contados antes que existiera uno de ellos. Tus pensamientos, Dios, cuánto me superan, qué impresionante es su conjunto. Por menosizarlos son más que las arenas, nunca terminaré de estar contigo. Ojalá, oh Dios, matar, mataras al malvado y se alejaran de mí los sanguinarios. Arman maquinaciones en tu contra y no toman en cuenta tus declaraciones. Señor, no debo odiar a los que te odian y estar astiado de los que te atacan. Con un odio perfecto yo los odio y para mí también son enemigos. Examiname, oh Dios, mira mi corazón, ponme a prueba y conoce mi inquietud. Fíjate si es que voy por mal camino y conduzce me por la antigua senda.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father. Should have noted for the public, thank you for watching on KPTS and our YouTube channels. There's two commissioners. We respect some personal conflicts that they have, but they are able to join us by Zoom. And so, as we've done in the past, they are present on their Zoom. And for Commissioner Howell and López, we've got to make sure that we recognize, make sure you raise your hand or send me a message when you want to speak, so I don't overlook. Okay, with that, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner López.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we received three people that have signed up for public agenda, but they've all said they want to speak to Item G, which has a public comment section, if that's right, unless they wanted to address this right now. Want to speak on Item G? Okay. I'm sorry about that. Did we say county announcements? Sorry. Madam Clerk.
Yeah, county announcements, sorry.
Yeah, county announcements, we did skip, so thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Was that my fault? I apologize. Nicole, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Cedric County was recently named a Wichita Business Journal 2023 Diversity and Inclusion Award Honoree. The Business Journal Diversity and Inclusion Awards recognize people and businesses in our community who have taken the extra steps in the workplace to make an inclusive and equitable environment a priority. Here's a video that was played at the banquet in honor of our DEI efforts.
With more than 40 departments and nearly 3,000 employees offering a wide range of services, Cedric County has strived to develop a diverse and inclusive workforce to best serve our community. As a team, Cedric County has worked hard to earn this DEI award for the third time in four years.
We began by hiring a consultant firm and DEI fellow to evaluate our current work environment and chart a path forward. Since then, Cedric County has taken action in several ways, including:
Conducting employee surveys, interviews, and focus groups on DEI issues. Updating county recruiting and hiring practices. Adding Juneteenth to the list of holidays observed by the county. Sharing videos internally that highlight employees during months that celebrate cultural diversity. And creating a DEI council made up entirely of employees.
Cedric County's goal is to make every employee feel valued and to help them understand and communicate better with each other and the diverse community we serve.
There is room for everyone in Cedric County, and this award reflects our commitment to fostering more diversity, equity, and inclusion in the future. We are honored and proud, but know there is more work to be done.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, Nicole?
Perfect. Thank you, sir. A major bridge renovation project is starting on Zoo Boulevard on Monday, September 11th, and it is expected to take about a year to complete. The bridge is in need of repair that spans the MS Mitch Mitchell Floodway, commonly known as the Big Ditch, between I-235 and Windmill Road. Drivers should expect delays with long-term lane closures and no left turns at the intersections of Zoo Boulevard and Windmill Road. Regular commuters should consider taking an alternative route. Also, September is National Preparedness Month, and Julie Stimson of Emergency Management is here to talk about it with you, or for you. Julie?
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Julie Stimson, Cedric County Emergency Management. So, yes, every September, we come together to recognize that National Preparedness Month, and this year is no different. We always talk about staying informed, make a plan, and build a kit. While all these are encouraged, this year's focus, we have, its theme is called Take Control 123, with a focus on preparing older adults for disasters. We know older adults can face greater risks and challenges during emergencies, and this year, Emergency Management has partnered with the Department of Aging to do kind of a campaign throughout the month to reach our older populations, to help them with disaster preparedness. Some graphics that we'll be sharing throughout the month, so we also ask folks to stay tuned to our social media page. Our Strategic Communications have done some fantastic graphics with ready.gov/older-adults. There's a ton of information out there to help kind of recognize some of those unique challenges that the older population may face in times of crisis. How we evacuate if we have any devices, so these are all kinds of themes that we're going to be pushing out throughout the community throughout the month of September. Whoops, wrong video. Is the video not on here? Oh, gotcha, okay. All right, so this is a short video to kind of talk about, this is FEMA, again, a nationwide disaster preparedness month. In a few minutes after this video, I'll bring Monica up from the Department of Aging, so she can kind of share some of the strategies that we're going to be doing throughout the month to help our older population be prepared.
Okay, we'll get started in just a few moments. Thank you all for joining us today.
That is not it. That is not it. Move on. Oh, that may be it. Yes.
Being prepared for an emergency is important at every age. As an older American, you may need to think about taking some specific steps as you get yourself prepared in case of a disaster.
As people age, their needs change and their capabilities change, so in preparing for a disaster, it's important to think differently than you might have at earlier ages. Preparing for an emergency is very empowering for older adults because it gives them the opportunity to identify what they need and ensure that they'll have those needs met when a disaster strikes.
Take a few minutes to check out the ready.gov website, which features specific tips and tools for older Americans. There are a few basics. First, learn about the types of risks that could affect your area. Then, make a plan. You can use the family emergency plan available on ready.gov to organize and help you develop a plan that works for you. Create a personal support network if you need special assistance during an emergency.
A personal support network is very important for all Americans, but especially for older Americans. It can include your family, friends, neighbors, doctors, organizations, places where you worship, places where you do activities, and just making sure that those people know what your needs are in case of a disaster.
Let the people in your personal support network know what medicines you rely on, and if you have any physical limitations.
For older Americans who receive services such as home health care or receive regular medical treatments, it's important to reach out to those service providers ahead of time and communicate to them what your needs are, and also to understand what their emergency plans are in case of a disaster.
Identify someone locally and someone out of state who will be your contact person in case of an emergency, and learn how to send updates via text messaging to your friends and family.
One of the things that we've noticed in the past during major emergencies, both the regular phone lines as well as the cell phone lines were overwhelmed, but people were still able to text message vital pieces of information in terms of location, nature of problem, or just to text to say all is well.
Once you have a plan, prepare an emergency kit. A standard emergency kit includes food, water, and medicine to sustain all members of your household for at least three days. Visit ready.gov for a complete list of suggested items, along with recommendations for how to prepare a family emergency plan. Pay particular attention to certain things, like making sure you have enough of any medications you take, an extra pair of glasses in case one breaks, or extra batteries for hearing aids.
It's important to remember that certain things, such as medicines, can go bad and spoil, so just make sure that what you're putting into your kit is not expired, and check it on a regular basis.
If you are unable to obtain an emergency supply, be sure to always fill your prescriptions on the first day you become eligible for a refill, rather than waiting until the day you run out. Keep copies of important documents like birth certificates, insurance policies, Medicare cards, and financial forms in your emergency supply kit. Also, consider placing electronic copies of this information on a portable flash drive. This could be useful for others, even if you don't personally use a computer. For those who depend on the mail for their social security benefits, switching to electronic payments is one simple, significant way people can protect themselves financially before disaster strikes. Federal benefit recipients can sign up by calling 800-333-1795, or at www.godirect.org. A disaster can occur at any moment. By making the commitment to prepare yourself ahead of time, you'll have the peace of mind and confidence needed to get through any emergency situation. Check out the information for older Americans on ready.gov and get started preparing today.
All right, thank you for giving me the opportunity to show the video. There are some unique challenges, like I mentioned, with the older population, and we want to make sure that that information is out there. September is a great month for everyone to take a look at your kits, if you have them. Look for expired food and water, check your batteries, flashlights, that kind of thing. And if you don't have a kit, this is a perfect month to kind of start putting some of that stuff together. You don't have to just go out to the store and spend a bunch of money to build a kit, just build it over time. You can just add a few things here and there, as you kind of have groceries and supplies. And if you have any challenges with meeting any of those things, give us a call, and there may be things that we can do to help. I also want to emphasize, the Red Cross has an app and has a webpage with a lot of good disaster preparedness information as well. Of course, we kind of rely on ready.gov, because that's the FEMA-sponsored site for all of our education. But I do want to introduce Monica from the Department of Aging to kind of talk about how we're going to be working throughout this month with our older populations.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Monica Sissel, Cedric County Department of Aging and Disability. We are thrilled to be involved in this Emergency Preparedness Month, and we did meet and visit about some great ideas, so we are going to partner and get some good information, some of the information that was posted, some posters, postcards, and flyers out to our partner senior centers in Cedric County, but also to the larger professionals in the Aging Network. We've got a variety of professionals, including financial advisors, realtors, home health agencies, all kinds of different professionals that work with older adults in various capacities. So, we'll push that information out through email and in our in-person meeting in September. And then also, I believe they're going to be sending out some posters to the senior centers, some of the housing, senior housing properties. So, we're hoping to educate a lot of people, get people to put their kits together and be prepared. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Don't see any, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Monica and Julie, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. I don't see any, so thanks as always, Nicole. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, regular meeting minutes of August 16, 2023.
Okay, Commissioners, you had a chance to review the minutes of August 16. If there are any corrections, questions, comments? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve the regular minutes of August 16, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. See any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner López.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next item, please. This is FEMA, again, a nationwide disaster preparedness month. In a few minutes after this video, I'll bring Monica up from the Department of Aging, so she can kind of share some of the strategies that we're going to be doing throughout the month to help our older population be prepared.
Okay, we'll get started in just a few moments. Thank you all for joining us today.
That is not it. That is not it. Let's move on. Oh, that may be it. Yes.
Being prepared for an emergency is important at every age. As an older American, you may need to think about taking some specific steps as you get yourself prepared in case of a disaster.
As people age, their needs change and their capabilities change. So in preparing for a disaster, it's important to think differently than you might have at earlier ages. Preparing for an emergency is very empowering for older adults because it gives them the opportunity to identify what they need and ensure that they'll have those needs met when a disaster strikes.
Take a few minutes to check out the ready.gov website, which features specific tips and tools for older Americans. There are a few basics. First, learn about the types of risks that could affect your area. Then make a plan. You can use the family emergency plan available on ready.gov to organize and help you develop a plan that works for you. Create a personal support network if you need special assistance during an emergency.
A personal support network is very important for all Americans, but especially for older Americans. It can include your family, friends, neighbors, doctors, organizations, places where you worship, places where you do activities, and just making sure that those people know what your needs are in case of a disaster.
Let the people in your personal support network know what medicines you rely on and if you have any physical limitations.
For older Americans who receive services such as home health care or receive regular medical treatments, it's important to reach out to those service providers ahead of time and communicate to them what your needs are, and also to understand what their emergency plans are in case of a disaster.
Identify someone locally and someone out of state who will be your contact person in case of an emergency, and learn how to send updates via text messaging to your friends and family.
One of the things that we've noticed in the past during major emergencies, both the regular phone lines as well as the cell phone lines were overwhelmed. But people were still able to text message vital pieces of information in terms of location, nature of problem, or just to text to say all is well.
Once you have a plan, prepare an emergency kit. A standard emergency kit includes food, water, and medicine to sustain all members of your household for at least three days. Visit ready.gov for a complete list of suggested items, along with recommendations for how to prepare a family emergency plan. Pay particular attention to certain things, like making sure you have enough of any medications you take, an extra pair of glasses in case one breaks, or extra batteries for hearing
It's important to remember that certain things such as medicines can go bad and spoil, so just make sure that what you're putting into your kit is not expired and check it on a regular basis.
If you are unable to obtain an emergency supply, be sure to always fill your prescriptions on the first day you become eligible for a refill, rather than waiting until the day you run out. Keep copies of important documents like birth certificates, insurance policies, Medicare cards, and financial forms in your emergency supply kit. Also consider placing electronic copies of this information on a portable flash drive. This could be useful for others even if you don't personally use a computer. For those who depend on the mail for their social security benefits, switching to electronic payments is one simple, significant way people can protect themselves financially before disaster strikes. Federal benefit recipients can sign up by calling 800-333-1795 or at www.godirect.org. A disaster can occur at any moment. By making the commitment to prepare yourself ahead of time, you'll have the peace of mind and confidence needed to get through any emergency situation. Check out the information for older Americans on ready.gov and get started preparing today.
All right, thank you for giving me the opportunity to show the video. There are some unique challenges, like I mentioned, with the older population, and we want to make sure that that information is out there. September is a great month for everyone to take a look at your kits if you have them. Look for expired food and water, check your batteries, flashlights, that kind of thing. And if you don't have a kit, this is a perfect month to kind of start putting some of that stuff together. You don't have to just go out to the store and spend a bunch of money to build a kit, just build it over time. You can just add a few things here and there, as you kind of have groceries and supplies. And if you have any challenges with meeting any of those things, give us a call, and there may be things that we can do to help. I also want to emphasize the Red Cross has an app and has a webpage with a lot of good disaster preparedness information as well. Of course, we kind of rely on ready.gov because that's the FEMA-sponsored site for all of our education. But I do want to introduce Monica from the Department of Aging to kind of talk about how we're going to be working throughout this month with our older populations.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Monica Sissel, Sedgwick County Department of Aging and Disability. We are thrilled to be involved in this Emergency Preparedness Month, and we did meet and visit about some great ideas. So we are going to partner and get some good information, some of the information that was posted, some posters, postcards, and flyers out to our partner senior centers in Sedgwick County, but also to the larger professionals in the Aging Network. We've got a variety of professionals, including financial advisors, realtors, home health agencies, all kinds of different professionals that work with older adults in various capacities. So we'll push that information out through email and in our in-person meeting in September. And then also, I believe they're going to be sending out some posters to the senior centers, some of the housing, senior housing properties. So we're hoping to educate a lot of people, get people to put their kits together and be prepared. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Don't see any, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Monica and Julie. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. I don't see any, so thanks as always, Nicole. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of August 16, 2023.
Okay, Commissioners, you had a chance to review the minutes of August 16. If there are any corrections, questions, comments? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve the regular minutes of August 16, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. See any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Proclamations, Item B, Proclamation Declaring Sickle Cell Awareness Month.
Commissioner Beatty is going to read the proclamation this morning.
Thank you, Chairman. A proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas National Sickle Cell Awareness Month is held in September to raise awareness of the health disparities associated with sickle cell disease and the need for blood donors of all races and ethnicities to support the needs of sickle cell patients. And whereas sickle cell disease distorts red blood cells, resulting in the disruption of oxygen to the body, which may lead to severe pain, tissue and organ damage, anemia, and stroke. And whereas, it is estimated that over 100,000 people in the U.S., a majority of whom are African descent but who may also be Mediterranean, Middle Eastern, or South Asian, have sickle cell disease and may require frequent transfusions throughout their lifetimes. And whereas, frequent transfusions can cause patients to develop an immune response against blood from a donor that is not closely matched, potentially leading to serious complications. And whereas, one in three black blood donors is a match for people with sickle cell disease. And whereas, the American Red Cross has joined with community partners, including Wichita's Omega Psi Phi fraternity, to create the Sickle Cell Initiative to increase the number of black blood donors and ensure that closely matched blood products are available. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Sickle Cell Awareness Month to encourage new and existing blood donors of all races and ethnicities to help ensure a diverse blood supply by scheduling a donation at www.redcrossblood.org or calling 1-800-REDCROSS. Okay, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
Okay, I'll second that. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And the proclamation is being accepted by Harry Willis, Red Cross Board Member and Omega Psi Phi Member.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. I'm Harry Willis.
Hi, Harry. Nice to see you.
Good to be seen, sir. Sickle cell disease is the most common genetic blood disorder in the United States, and during September, Sickle Cell Awareness Month, and during September, Sickle Cell Awareness Month at the American Red Cross, we shine a light on this painful and life-threatening disorder. Why is it so important to me? I'm glad you asked. One in three African-American, one in three African-American blood donors is a match for people with sickle cell disease. To help ensure patients, to help ensure patients have the blood products they need, we've launched the Sickle Cell Initiative in 2021, and since then, we have been tirelessly working with our partners in the black community to grow the number of blood donors who are black. One of these partners is my fraternity, Omega Psi Phi. Our charge is to host or participate in blood drives annually. For nearly 20 years, Omega Psi Phi has engaged the communities that we live in to help diversify the blood supply, not only here but across the nation. Nothing pleases me more than to receive a phone call or an email from a donor stating that their blood product was used during a hurricane relief effort or any number of life-saving situations across the nation. Over the last year, the Red Cross has made incredible progress with the Sickle Cell Initiative. Since our launch, we have increased our first-time African-American blood donors to more than 45,000, nearly doubling the number of new donors and essentially reversing the trend of declining donors overall for this group. We've also provided more than 138,000 sickle cell trait screenings to help people learn more about their health. How can you help? Again, I'm glad you asked. We are inviting you to join our efforts to help patients with sickle cell disease and drive blood donations. Every two seconds, someone in America needs blood. You can help by finding a drive near you. Schedule a blood donation appointment by visiting redcrossblood.org using the Blood Donor App or calling 1-800-REDCROSS. Thank you for recognizing the work that we do to serve our community. We look forward to working with you in the future. I'd also like to say that I'm here with Logan and Shannon from the Red Cross as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Harry, thank you again. Would you like to come right down here?
All right, you guys ready? Three, two, one. One. Okay, thank you, guys.
he was in third grade. Is that right, Harry? He was almost an A student. Good to see you, Harry. All right, next item, please.
Appointments, Item C, Accept the Resignation of Kendall Hirschberger from the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board.
Yeah, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is the resignation of Kendall Hirschberger from Chairman Meitzner's Citizens Advisory Board. He's tendered his resignation, and the recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Thank you, and I want to give a thanks to Kendall. He has done a nice job serving on this board, and he had some time conflicts that would not allow him to continue to serve. So with that, make a motion that we accept the resignation of Kendall Hirschberger.
Second.
Motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, Resolution Reappointing Joe Johnson to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Commissioner Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Good.
Just gave you a promotion.
As you all know, the Sedgwick County has a joint planning commission with the City of Wichita called the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Each of the county commissioners has one recommendation they can make for an appointment to the MAPC. They, the MAPC hears zoning cases, they review Platts, they make recommendations on zoning codes. So they have, it's a very time-intensive appointment for folks who serve on that board or on that planning commission. The, Joe Johnson is currently a member of the MAPC, and the resolution in front of you today would, is a reappointment of Joe Johnson to the MAPC. The recommended action is that you adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Justin. And after careful evaluation and console, I agree that I believe Joe Johnson. Joe, you know how I feel. He does a great job in this community and on this board, so I am proud and more than happy to make a motion that we reappoint Joe Johnson to this board.
Second.
Any other comments? See none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And Joe is here to be sworn in.
Good. I'm going to get down here. There we go. Appreciate that. Good morning, Commissioners. All right. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, so help me God.
I do.
All right. Thank you, Satan. Get even here.
I'll say, Joe, time's up. Sorry about that.
Shut off the mic, huh? Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner, for reappointing me. I considered not serving, but I really enjoy the men and women that serve on the board and the diverse views that we have and the discussions we hold. And I particularly appreciate Justin and his hard work and representation of the county in issues it brought before us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. You're a good friend and a good person. Any other comments? Okay. Madam Clerk. Oh, wait, Commissioner Dennis. Hold on, Joe. Commissioner Dennis?
I had the opportunity to serve with Joe for a lot of years on the MAPC, and I agree that that's a great group of individuals. I hope we can retain all the ones that we have on there now. I know that we've got a couple of open positions coming up here in the near future that are at large, and I'm looking forward to, I would prefer to renominate each one of those that are currently serving because they do a great job. A lot of people don't know what MAPC does, but they don't get paid anything, they work long hours, they hear a lot of different, very important cases that impact our community. And so Joe is just one of 14 members of that, but seven of them come from Sedgwick County. And I thank you very much for your service on that board and for each of the other ones that are volunteers that spend hours. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. I did serve for the city when Commissioner Meitzner was a city commissioner.
I'm glad you came over to the right side of the street.
All right, thanks, Joe. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, Resolution Reappointing Susan Turnus to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, this item, the Access Advisory Board is a joint board between the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County. They advise on, Sedgwick County and the city on Americans with Disabilities Act and accessibility matters. Each county commissioner has one appointment to this board. This resolution would reappoint Susan Turnus, who is an appointment for Commissioner Sarah Lopez, who would reappoint her term through May 31 of 2025. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much. I hope you can understand me, I'm still trying to get my voice back here, but when I first started, this was the first recommendation I made for a board with Suzie for this Access Advisory Board. I couldn't think of anybody who was a better fit than Suzie, so I'm really excited that she's willing to continue serving in this role, and I will move that we adopt the resolution reappointing Suzie Turnus to the Access Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business, Item F, Extension Center Quarterly Update.
Okay. Dr. Brantley, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and Chair and County Leaders, and Jennifer Brantley, Director of Sedgwick County Extension Office. As you know, Extension focuses on providing unbiased, research-based information to the cities, to the citizens of Sedgwick County, basically knowledge for life. And we do this through four different areas: 4H and youth development, community vitality or community development, agriculture, horticulture, and family consumer sciences. And so we appreciate the opportunity to be here today for a quarterly update and to share a little bit about our programming within one of those areas. So today, we're going to highlight our area of agriculture, and we have with us today Jeff Seiler, our Agriculture Agent.
Good morning, Jeff. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning. As Jennifer said, my name is Jeff Seiler. I'm the Agriculture Natural Resource Agent with the Extension Office. I've been in this position since January of 2019. Normally, when people hear Sedgwick County, they think of Wichita. However, according to the most recently published census of agriculture, 77% of our land in the county is actually in farms. 82% of that is in cropland, and another 15% is in pasture. In 2022, Sedgwick County farmers planted an estimated 144,500 acres of wheat, 117,000 acres of soybean, 51,600 acres of corn, and 29,000 acres of sorghum, along with some other crops to a lesser degree. So agriculture is definitely significant in the county. In my job, I try and support the homeowner with several backyard chickens all the way to the farmer that's producing several thousand acres of crops. We have a lot of citizens in the county that work in town and live on several acres outside of city limits. A lot of times, they don't have, some of them don't have a lot of agriculture background or no agriculture background at all, so I spend a lot of time teaching them on ways to properly manage their ground. As part of that effort, I hosted a series of 14 online meetings, targeted to small acreage landowners, where we talked about a number of different agriculture topics, kind of the basic introductory level to help to educate them. In some of my more traditional ag programming, with wheat being the number one crop in the county, the Sedgwick County wheat variety plots are a big effort of mine. These plots contain three repetitions of 28 varieties, and we plant these at two locations in the county and are looking at possibly adding a third location this year. With the equipment we use for harvest and planting, we're able to produce high-quality, county-specific data that our farmers use every year to make their variety selection. Along with the data, I also host an annual wheat pot tour. This is a popular event. We have wheat specialists come out, and we discuss all 28 varieties in the pot. However, as you know, farmers are very busy. They often, their work is weather-based, so they're not always able to attend. We're constantly cycling varieties in and out as we develop new ones, as we have, the environment changing, pests are changing, we get new varieties every year. Some of the varieties are getting old, the pests are getting better at fighting against them. So if they miss out on the wheat pot, they miss out on the tour, they miss out on a lot of really good information that could help them in their operation. With that, we have 28 varieties in the pot. A farmer, an individual farmer, might be only considering maybe four or five of these. So I realized I needed a way to deliver this information that was more efficient and more accessible to our farmers, rather than just at the pot tour. So I came up with this interactive wheat pot that you can see on your screen. What really got this going was during COVID, we couldn't have the in-person meeting, so I hosted an online wheat pot tour. It wasn't, it wasn't the right setting for that. It wasn't the most riveting content. I mean, I posted on YouTube, it was two hours long. I looked at it, and I said, I will never watch this. So I realized we got to do something different because this is good information, but I see a video that's 10 minutes long on YouTube, and I mark it for later, and that's the end of it. So that's where this came about. A farmer can select the varieties they're interested in, and when they select on it, they hear audio comments just on the highlights of that. They have access to multiple years of yield data, and they also have different resources from K-State as well as the seed companies on that specific variety. So I'll just click on one here, and you can kind of take a quick look.
LCS Helix AX is another collaxium variety from Leamagreen. It has been labeled as a variety for high-yielding environments, but has shown its ability to hold up in tough conditions the last couple of years. Well, Atomic AX has been considered...
So you can scroll through the previous year's yield data, and there's a link at the bottom that connects them with the seed company's website so they can get more about that. And as I said, we have K-State resources where we have K-State ratings on each of those varieties. So that's what I had for you today. I appreciate you allowing me to share a little bit of my programming with you.
Very good. That was good, and I did enjoy the two-hour presentation that you...
Yeah, you watched it. Good.
Commissioner Beatty.
Dr. Brantley, Jeff, thanks for sharing. Appreciate all that you guys do at the Extension Center. Two questions, really.
Yeah.
I noticed they're cutting a lot of corn right now in my neck of the woods. Any idea on how the corn crop's going to be?
Well, it was looking fantastic there for a while back in July when we were getting those rains. And with the lack of soil moisture, I mean, we knew as soon as it got hot, as soon as the rain quit, it was going to be tough. I mean, it depends on your ground and where you're at. A lot of the storms in late into July are pretty spotty. So I'm hearing, you know, in the furly area, there's been some pretty good yields up towards, you know, 120 bushel per acre, which that's a, that's a good corn yield. I'm hearing a lot of 50 to 90... I'm hearing a lot of fifty to ninety bushels per acre, which is definitely down for our area. It wasn't a good year. And if you look towards the bean harvest, I mean, we already have guys swathing beans that were meant to go, you know, to grain. So it's definitely a tough year. We've had several tough years in a row for our farmers. So hopefully, this weather pattern can change.
Jeff, last question.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that we don't talk enough about as a state is the water crisis. Do you have any thoughts on where we're heading on this water crisis, and is it a crisis?
I think it depends on where you are. If you look across the state, like areas in Hayes and the Rattlesnake Creek area, they're implementing like groundwater management districts. I mean, there's areas of the world where they're even more limited than we are, and those areas are usually where they're developing new technology. I don't think it's a crisis here right now, but I think that, you know, it potentially could be. It's good, you know, it's convenient for us that other people are experiencing this, because that's where they're developing technologies. They're doing the research on, you know, how do we do this more efficiently? They're looking at soil moisture meters. They're looking at, you know, measuring the actual moisture in the crop, the stress on the crop. We're getting more into precision ag, and we're getting better at what we do. So I can't say that it's a crisis here right now. You know, it is in some places. There is, you know, potential for growth. I mean, we gotta have agriculture, so we'll figure it out one way or the other. I guess that's job security.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate your update.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Dr. Brantley, thanks for coming and briefing us today. The data that you have on wheat specifically, I'm kind of interested in, how applicable is that across the state, or is it people in other counties doing your job doing the same thing? For example, my wheat crop this year didn't even germinate out in southwest Kansas, so I'm interested in something that'll grow.
So I think that's what's so important about doing county-specific data. As far as I know, there are some other extension offices across the county that do strip trials, where, you know, you take your twenty-foot drill and you plant it out, you know, a hundred-foot row until you run out of seed. What we're doing is replicated trials, so we're getting better data. These are five-and-a-half wide by thirty-foot-long plots, and they're replicated, which replication's important, you know, data points are important. As far as applicable across the state, I mean, it's not always applicable across the county, which is why it's important to have multiple locations, which just having those two extra data points, Case State does do some performance trials. The closest ones would be Newton, Hutchinson, and Conway Springs. So if we didn't have these, yes, they could look at that. But oftentimes, the neighbor across the road, you know, has a different soil type. Even within a 160-acre field, we have different, a number of different soil types. You know, maybe your soil has a mosaic virus in there that, you know, a neighbor doesn't or someone across the state does. But there's such variability statewide. There's varieties in western Kansas that we're not planting here in south-central Kansas. There's varieties just south of the border in Oklahoma that we're not planting. So it's important to have local data, and that's what our farmers want. They don't want to hear just what they're doing in Manhattan. They want to see what's going on in their field. And with these wheat pots, they can walk across the road. These are hosted in a farmer's field. They donate the ground for us to do it, so they can pair these varieties side-by-side next to each other in the field. It's extremely valuable to them.
Very good. Thanks, and thanks for your information on the corn. It's a couple weeks early. They're harvesting a lot earlier than I've seen in the past.
Yep, they definitely are. It's a tough year.
Yeah. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Howe Lopez? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to receive and file.
Thank you.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Madam, did you say? You got it, Clerk?
Got it.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you, Dr. Brantley, and please, please share with your staff the appreciation that we have as commissioners for all the work they do. And nice purple shirt you got there. Commissioner Beatty wanted me to say that? Okay, next item, please.
Item G, Island Annexation Request by the City of Valley Center pursuant to the City of Valley Center Resolution Number 738-23.
Okay, and for those that have joined our meeting to speak, what we do is we have a presentation, and then we also have questions and answers from the commission to the presentation, and then we open it up for public comment, and then we receive those. There may be questions to each of you during that time. Then we close the public comment, and when the public comment's closed, and it comes back between the commission and the presenter, and then the voting options become available at that time. So just wanted to let you know how the process works. So, Kirk, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Kirk Sponsell, Deputy County Counselor. Here before you today is an island annexation requested by the City of Valley Center. The Valley Center City Council approved Resolution 738-23 to initiate island annexation proceedings as requested by the landowners. The city then submit to the county the item for consideration. Under state law, we have thirty days after receipt of the city's resolution to make findings, which I will discuss in further detail during this presentation. An island annexation is when the property proposed to be annexed does not join the city. And I'm first going to go through the maps of the property and show the general area. So this property is east of Ridge, and it's between Seventy-seventh Street North and west A Fifth Street North. This is a map that shows the property in question, which is in red, in relation to Valley Center, in relation to Mays, in relation to City of Wichita. I will point out that the property in red, the property under consideration today is actually composed of three separate tracts of property that are approximately three-hundred-and-six acres, all told cumulatively. This is zoomed-in map, and this is the last map concerning the properties in question. As I know, there are three different tracts of property within this request, but I will say that the Metropolitan Area Planning Department did not find a material difference between the three properties in consideration for today. Also, prior to this annexation request, I will point out the property owners applied for a conditional use through Sedgwick County to allow a sand or gravel extraction and rock-crushing operation. That application was subsequently withdrawn. The subject site is currently zoned as rural residential. Now, in terms of the potential use for the property, that actually raises a broader question that is here today, that was raised by some of the documents submitted by interested parties related to this question, and that concerns the potential or proposed use of the property. As I indicated, there was previously a conditional use application on the property that has been withdrawn, which suggests what the interest previously was in the development of the property. With that said, concerning the documents that were received from Valley Center concerning this item, neither the proposed resolution nor the underlying petitions for annexation from the property owners specifically list the proposed use or the reason for the request of annexation into the property of Valley Center. So that's what we're working with right now, is on its face, we don't have the specific use. Now, in terms of the comments by the community, in terms of the case law, there is an indication that the proposed use must be considered by yourselves and your determinations today. That is the wording of case law. With that said, the case law generally assumes that a proposed use is indicated with the application for annexation itself. As I said, on its face today, we don't have that. With that said, there is a representative from Valley Center who might be able to provide more information on this topic. Going further, various staff have reviewed the proposed annexation. Concerning the public services, the subject site is not within a rural water district. Currently, the nearest Valley Center water line is approximately 1.17 miles east of the subject site. The Valley Center Sanitary Sewer Service is approximately two miles east of the subject site, and is unknown presently to MAPD if a pump station would be required in order to provide adequate service. The subject site is within the City of Valley Center's Fire Department Response Area. They have an automatic and mutual aid response with the city, with the Sedgwick County Fire Department, and should the annexation be approved, it would become the responsibility of Valley Center PD to service the subject site. The surrounding roadways are in unincorporated Sedgwick County and are maintained by Sedgwick County. Public Works has indicated that if a sand pit is ultimately developed on the property, the potential increase in the traffic on Ridge Road would be problematic, in that it would cause slow-moving truck traffic to mingle with high-speed traffic in the area. Now, as a whole, overall, MAPD indicates that providing municipal services could prove costly and challenging due to the need to cross the Wichita Valley Center floodway, which separates the proposed annexation area from the Valley Center limits. Is our understanding that a service plan is being developed for the area, and I would defer once again to Valley Center for any specifics related to those details. As a whole, MAPD has indicated the proposed island annexation is consistent with the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan. That's because the annexation area is within the Valley Center Urban Growth Area. The Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan is silent on the appropriate types of land use and timing of such development for the areas within a city's urban area of influence. In addition, the proposed annexation is, on its face, consistent with the Valley Center Comprehensive Plan. I say that because the plan's future land use map identifies the subject site as agricultural and vacant rural. Presently, the property is zoned as rural residential. If the plan is for it to stay as agricultural, then it would remain consistent with Valley Center's Comprehensive Plan. However, if they have other proposed uses for the property in the future, that might potentially be in conflict with the Valley Center Comprehensive Plan as presently written. Once again, the proposed annexation does not indicate the specific land use change, a specific land use change from the current agricultural use. With the aforementioned information in mind, the MAPD has recommend the BOC find the annexation will not hinder the proper growth and development of the area or that of an incorporated city located within the county. This is based on a review showing that the proposed annexation, on its face, is consistent with the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan and Valley Center Comprehensive Plan. However, the annexation may not be consistent with the Valley Center Comprehensive Plan if the subject site is proposed to change from the current agricultural use, and that would potentially warrant further review of the application in terms of services that are going to be provided, and if they would be able to completely address the needs of the area. State statute lays out requirements in which an island annexation can take place. First, the land is located within the same county as the city. Second is that the landowners petition for or consent in writing to the annexation of the land. And third, that the Board of County Commissioners of the county, by a two-thirds vote of the members thereof, find and determine that the annexation of the land will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located within the county. So as previously indicated, what we have before us, we don't have all the answers to at this time in terms of services, in terms of purported uses. That is, based on case law, something that must be considered analysis. Further questions should be raised in that regard. If it is determined that there are other uses planned for the property, then MAPD would prefer to have the opportunity to review the applicable service plans to see if they are, to see if they are consistent with needs. Concerning the recommendation, recommended action before you today, first, you could find the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County, and therefore also approve the resolution consistent with that finding. Second option is that you could find the proposed annexation will hinder or prevent the proper growth and development either of the area or of that of another incorporated city located in Sedgwick County, and also approve the resolution consistent with the finding. As previously indicated, I am happy to stand for questions. I know other people are wanting to speak on the matter, and Representative from Valley Center is present today as well. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, is there any questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kirk, one question is that the Valley Center is going to have provide services to this property in the future at some point, and there's a review period that comes back to the commission at some point in the future that says whether or not they provided all of the services. Is that correct?
Commissioner, I believe that's a different type of annexation. That is traditionally when the area is contiguous to the Valley Center boundary, and Valley Center does the annexation without the consent of the landowners. This is a different situation, so that is not a requirement by statute.
So there's no requirement for them to provide sewer, water, any of the other services?
That is not specifically laid out in the statutes, but I would say that that potentially goes to the overarching question of whether or not that will hinder the growth and development, the proper growth and development of the area.
So the only choice that we have is, or making our decision, is whether it would hinder proper growth and development of the area?
Or of a surrounding city within the county.
There's nothing surrounding close, so.
That is the key determination before you today, yes.
Okay. That's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, but do we need to announce if we've had any ex parte communications on this before we get in? I think so. I have not had any ex parte communications that I recall. Commissioner Dennis?
I have not had ex parte contact on this.
I have had some ex parte contact via email.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
I have not had any either. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Howe?
I have had no ex parte communication on this, on this case.
Okay, so with that, I think everybody has an open mind to determine how we're going to handle this. Any other questions for Kirk at this time? I don't see any, but out of respect to our fellow representatives, would this person from Valley Center government, please, Representative from Valley Center, please come up and share any comments or addresses? Please state your name and address, and then you can-
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning. I almost said good evening. I'm used to council meetings. I am Brent Clark, the proud city administrator in Valley Center. My home address is 315 North Fiddler's Creek Street in Valley Center, Kansas. Proud Valley resident. This morning, this comes before you as a great opportunity for Valley Center to extend our corporate limits. I'm all the way to Ridge Road. This is something that has been identified in our area of influence map that was recently amended. Our actual area of influence went all the way to Ridge, then all the way south to Fifty-third Street, and then north, all the way, I believe, to 109th.
Brent, you could probably go backwards on the slides, if you know how to do that and show that.
Yep.
Something like that, if you want to.
Ooh, I have all the control now.
That's okay. Yeah.
And so it actually went north, passed 101st here, and then south to Fifty-third Street is our new area of influence as of 2020, I believe. And so the property owners, there are three parcels here. The two property owners did come to the city to voluntarily request us to annex this area in. We're looking at, you know, doing residential in this area. We have gone through an analysis and do have maps for utility extensions. So roughly, the water and sewer lines and all those things, water line will cost about three, $3.5 million for the 12-inch water main, and then five and a half million with all the lift stations and those things to provide sewer. Those would come straight down Seventy-seventh Street or forward in the Valley Center area and Seventy-seventh Street in the county. And so we have done an analysis and study of this area when it comes to providing utilities. As previously mentioned, we do already provide mutual aid for any accidents or things that occur on Ridge Road on Seventy-seventh or Eighty-Fifth. No offense, we give a shout-out to our public safety. They do a fantastic job, and most of times, we kind of beat the county out there. So do you want to make sure that our public safety department gets the kudos that they deserve for their quick-response times? As you know, Valley Center does have our own police and fire services, so we feel we can adequately provide all the city services that our other residents do have, once this does become a residential area. I'll stand for any questions or wait for any of our constituents or potential constituents.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis has a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, Brent, just a couple real quick questions. One is, I understand from Kirk's discussion that it has to be in accordance with your comprehensive plan, if I didn't misunderstand what he said. What's your comprehensive plan- What's your comprehensive plan say about this area?
And so our comprehensive plan is actually going under review, and we're going to be updating it. It's been since 2012 or 2013 since we actually reviewed the comprehensive plan, and that was prior to this area being in our area of influence. And so this would be one of those items that we review during that comp plan update, and we have, you know, a staff identified this as a great residential opportunity.
Okay. So as you revise your comprehensive plan in the future, you're looking at this being residential?
Yes. As you know, you know, Valley Center, you know, residential is our bread and butter. You know, we're a fantastic bedroom community with an incredible school system.
So you're not looking at a rock-crushing operation out here?
You know, it's residential. You know, it's really up to the property owners, you know, what they request, you know, to be a local matter that the city, Valley Center would have to explore if that does get presented to us.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Brett, thanks. Thanks for coming up and explaining the position there. That's very helpful, and if you stand by, we may call you back up for some questions.
Sounds great. I'm here to help.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the commission at this time to the presenter or to Brett? And I don't see any. I don't see any online. You want to maybe kind of reshow that so I can see if there, if Commissioner Howell or Commissioner Lopez has any questions? With that, we will now go to the public comment section of this agenda item. First to speak with us is Deanna, or Deana Buchell. And Deana, thank you. I think there was some communication with you to submit something in writing, which you did. Thank you very much. We do have that in writing, and we will submit that as part of the, of the minutes of this. And now, so you have five minutes to addresses and name and address, and the clerk here has a, has a counter for the five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Deana Buchell. My address is 820 North 63rd Street West, Valley Center, Kansas. I am a resident of the county. I am not in the city limits. Okay? My property, and I can't, I will do my best to point out, my property is about right here.
Okay.
Okay.
See it?
I'm nervous.
That's okay.
I apologize. I'm not going to read my entire letter. I'm going to highlight the points that I think are really important for you to consider today.
Right.
As I noted in the beginning, I and my fellow neighbors strongly oppose this resolution. We believe that this resolution is an attempt to circumvent a rezoning request established under case number CON 2023-0619 from June of 2023. This was on track to be denied. Again, we believe this to be an effort to circumvent that in the long run. Valley Center has a historical commitment to neighborhood integrity, as does the County Commission. Valley Center previously denied a similar zoning request in 2004, demonstrating a historical commitment to preserving the neighborhood's characteristic through the Sunnydale acquisition. Okay? I'm not sure how many of you may be familiar with that, but the Sunnydale residents, you know, there was a request for island annexation, and again, it was denied at that time. Legal precedent was mentioned by the deputy clerk, and I urge you to review this case. James Baggett versus the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County. Kansas is a case legal precedent that highlights the importance of considering negative impacts on surrounding residential areas when deciding on annexation. Again, keeping in mind that we believe this to be an end run around the zoning request that was on track to be denied. Questions for consideration? There are several that I have for you, including the reasons for seeking annexation at this time, the intended uses for the property, the services Valley Center plans to provide, alignment with growth and development vision, and the potential challenges associated with providing municipal services. There was a mention that it would come straight across 77th Street. 77th Street is not a through street, gentlemen. Okay? 77th Street dead ends at the Big Ditch. 77th Street picks up again on the other side of the Big Ditch. It's not a through street. There is going to be challenges, and I'm not sure that the city of Valley Center is, the residents are looking forward to spending that kind of money to bring those services to this area when the time is appropriate. I appeal for due diligence and community preservation. I urge you to exercise due diligence in evaluating the implications of the resolution and prioritize the interests of the nearby residents in their deliberations. Emphasize importance of transparency, which I don't believe we have, accountability, and preserving the community's character and vitality. Our area surrounded by this, surrounding this property, okay? There's about 15 properties from 85th Street to 77th Street to the east of this property. Again, believing that this is an end run in an attempt to get the sandpit permitted, I urge you to vote no, to not recommend this, and I stand for any questions.
Okay. Deana, there's a question here. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Ms. Buchell, my question is for Kirk Sponsel.
Okay.
Thank you. Kirk, based on the discussion we just heard from Ms. Buchell, and I have her letter in front of me, one of the things that it says in her letter is that the court's decision highlighted the critical importance of considering the potential negative impacts on the surrounded, surrounding residential areas. And you did not list that as one of the things that we're supposed to consider as we're making a decision. So my question is, is this an accurate depiction of what, that's one thing that we should be considering?
I read through it once. If it's permissible, Commissioner, if I could have a few minutes and then come back to the board to answer that question, I'd appreciate it. To read through the, that ruling again for that specific question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or at this time? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope you can hear me. This is a test of the technology. We'll see if it works.
We can, we can hear you just fine. We can hear you just fine.
Great, thank you. Because if this is island annexation, do I understand this did not require the community notification that a unilateral annexation would require?
Correct.
Public notification? Other words, were people in the area informed of this potential action today?
Kirk Sponsel, Deputy County Counselor, there's no requirement on our statute for us to send out specific notice for this hearing today.
Okay. And then, and likewise, because of that, there is no, there is no attempt for, I mean, there's nobody that submitted any type of protest petition. There's no protest petition, protest percentage slide in this pack today. So right now, as far as we know, that's not part of this presentation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll listen to the commentary. I just wanted to clarify those two things. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Not at this time. So.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Buchell, and for your, and thanks again for cooperating. Okay. Next up is Wayne Iverson. Wayne, just a reminder, name and address, and you have five minutes.
Morning, Mr. [inaudible]. Yeah, my name's Wayne Iverson, live at 8355 North Ridge Road, like Deana. Kind of feel like there's a little bit of an end run going. You know, we're in, in the process of doing a pretty sizable facelift on our property and trying to maintain the value of our property. If, the Leaker family name is, is extremely big in Valley Center. If the Leakers were to go to Valley Center and request change, I have no doubt that Valley Center would probably go with that. You know, if, if they were to wind up putting a sandpit there in a rock crusher, everything that I see, the immediate properties in the area would probably lose around 30% of their I like the majority of the neighbors in that, in our area. You know, the property is their, you know, their retirement, their, their investment in, in life. I would like to know what the actual property is going to be used for. I, when I bought the house 35 years ago, I always expected that there would be a housing development eventually in that area. You know, if they're going to turn it into residence, I'm not opposed. Yeah. But it does seem like it's, you know, they were fixing to lose denial on, on the use of the property before. That's, that's what I've got to say.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Iverson?
I have one question, sir.
Yes. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. The, the conferee just talked about his property values potentially going down. Does he have any data that he could provide that would say more than just speculation? I'm aware there are some, some former sandpit-type things around the community that have housing around them today that are extremely high-end housing areas. I'm sure that those properties are, are not diminished because of the history of that neighborhood. So I'm just, I just was wondering, does, does he have anything he could submit that would provide some type of evidence of, of why he believes that's what, that would happen? That's what would happen? Or is it just truly speculation?
No, we did do some research. I don't have a copy of it right now, but the immediate properties, you know, granted, there's a lot of high-end properties around sandpits. They're talking 30 to 40 years. If that is what they wind up developing out there, well, for the first 20 years, you know, the property value's going to be down. And I'm at an age where I'm getting ready to retire pretty soon, and I don't want to be listening to dump trucks beeping across the street all day long, and, but I will see if we can't find that information and, and supply it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, not for this conferee, but I have a question for Kirk relating to this testimony.
All right.
If that's okay?
Yep, he's coming back up.
I'm present, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you. I couldn't see you. There you, I see you now. You know, both of the people that have spoken so far have talked about they, they're suspicious of an, of an end run, way to get what the applicant wants without maybe following the previous process. They thought they would be denied, and they think the future use is something dealing with rock-crushing or sand excavation or whatever. Based on what's in front of us today, right now, is the history of this what happened before this application today, is the history something I'm allowed to consider, or the unnamed future use of this property that we're all speculating what that might be? Am I allowed to also speculate, or is that simply not part of this case, and I'm really not allowed to consider that?
So I, I would say things you can look to are the comments by Valley Center today that the proposed future use of this is residential, and that they were non-committal on whether there would or would not be a sand and gravel excavation thing. Basically, they said we would address that later date if and when it was raised. I, I think that this also bleeds into Commissioner Dennis's prior question about consideration of the surrounding impact. So if I could give a broader overview, combining both Commissioner Howell's and Commissioner Dennis's questions, in relation to the case law about the adverse impact on the surrounding areas, I would say that the court specifically focused on whether or not adverse impacts on the surrounding areas would hinder the growth and development of that area. For example, in the prior case, what was being considered was the land being used for industrial purposes when residential was surrounding it. And so the court basically gave some general questions of, well, is this incompatible with the residential areas? Would this cause nuisances that would adversely impact further residential development around the area? Those were questions that were raised. And so I think before you today, you can certainly consider the information provided that was residential, and there might be a broader query. If this were to go the route of where a sandpit were included, are there potentially any measures that could be used to mitigate the impact of the sandpit operations on surrounding residential areas? I think you might be able to generally view that just on a more, you know, theoretical, high-level view of situations. For example, you know, are there situations in which the noise of a, of a sandpit could be mitigated? Are there ways that this can be mitigated? Things of that nature. Because what we have to go back to is the case law does say that you must consider proposed use, but once again, we're also not analyzing the propriety of a sandpit here or of a residential use here even, under the golden factors. That's not what's before the commission today.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Kirk, for some of those details. The challenge is, I think we're trying to lay over a general zoning approach to this, and I just heard you say this, this is a different, we don't use the golden rules in something of an annexation request. Did I hear that correctly?
That is correct. This shouldn't be analyzed in the terms of, you know, is, is the proposed use, is the future use, is that, is that permissible, you know, under the golden factors, you know, and analyzing it as if, as if this is your zoning consideration. The conditional use as previously presents you, yes, that was a situation where you would have used the golden factors in your analysis, and you would have made determinations of the proper land use. But this is a separate question, and while there is overlap, the key question here is, the city is requesting this annexation, they're interested in it. Does this proposed annexation hinder the growth and development of the area or surrounding city?
So it's limited to that?
That, that is the key overarching question. Now, there is some additional analysis that should be done in terms of proposed use that case law lays out, so there is some overlap, but that is the key question to you today.
Okay. That's helpful. Do you know, island, this is my first island annexation request. Do we, how, has this been, has an island annexation been denied previously from this commission in recent years, or?
I, I am not aware of a situation in which island annexation has been denied, but once again, they must be analyzed on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. To go back to my original question, I appreciate you giving a little bit further detail on that, but also, one of the things that you indicated earlier was that the proposed use should be considered. That's one of our considerations.
That, that is correct.
And I asked Brent directly about the proposed use, and conveniently, they're reviewing their comprehensive plan, so I don't have an idea what the proposed use is at this point.
I may be incorrect, but I believe he stated the, the planned or proposed, I don't know if it's the proposed use or the planned use, but it's residential. That, that's what he has indicated today, is residential.
But there's nothing in writing that says that that's what it can be, and there's nothing that I've heard that's going to prohibit rock-crushing, and that's really what I'm most concerned about on this island annexation, is that was what came before us before, is that they want to put a sandpit in, and they want a rock-crushing operation. And suddenly, Valley Center is now asking to island annex this, and it took it out of our hands. So I am, I have suspicions, okay? I have concerns. And I don't know the proposed use, and so I need a direct answer. Can I consider a proposed use that I have no idea what it Can I consider a proposed use that I have no idea what it is?
The case law contemplated that with almost every application for annexation, a proposed use would be attached. Now, what we have today before us is irregular, because we don't have a proposed use attached in the underlying documents. As you've indicated, we have suspicions about what might be in play in the future, but I think as what's been presented by Valley Center today, the, the planned use, as best I can say, is residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chairman, I do have a question.
Yep, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Looking at these maps, I think the first conferee did talk about this a little bit, but looking at these maps, to provide city services to a residential neighborhood on the west side of the floodway would be incredibly challenging. So to the extent that the city thinks that's what they might be doing, will they be willing to speak to that concern? How would they provide city services in terms of, you know, basically municipal services, things like, well, police and fire would be, would be a great one. I think also things like electrical service, water service, and sewage service would be something that they ought to be able to, to identify. We have a plan that if, when this is, I'm moving into residential, there is a way to get this done. Right now, it looks to me like it's a complete barrier. They would have to find something to the west of them to provide those services to that area. And I guess I just, I think that it would be reasonable for the city to address, address how they would do this, if that's really what's going to happen.
And Mr. Brett Clark is coming up to address your question.
Thank you.
Brett, welcome back.
Hello, yes, sorry, I'm checking to see, actually, I have it in my email, so I didn't print off copies. I do apologize for that. But yes, we do have maps for water and sewer, you know, currently, we are in the Evergy service territory, of course. The city has begun the process to try to municipals from Evergy, and so this is another one of those items to where, you know, when we do have annexations that occur prior to us municipals, and that then would become our electrical service territory if that process does go through the entire way through the, the court system. I do want to say, and, and something I did forget to mention prior is, is we do have residents in, we call it kind of the West Valley area. I knew I was going to break it. On the, on the west side of the Little Arkansas River, that currently are inside city limits that do not have water and ser, water and sewer services. And so this would be a great opportunity for us to extend our mains, to then have those services available to residents that are already annexed in to Valley Center that happened years ago during the annexation processes. So, you know, this is not just for, you know, just this subdivision potentially, or this area, but also for all the homes on the west side of Valley Center. Also too, just want to make sure to, to clarify, I don't know if, if this was stated or not, but the three properties are, you know, agriculture, they are, you know, rural residential, and so if that is annexed in via the city ordinances after two readings, that then becomes our zoning as well, is rural residential. There are no homes located on these two property, or these three parcels, and so I want to make sure that that's articulated as well. One of the, well, one of the things too, in this area that I have not mentioned yet is really the, the availability of water. You know, there are some water rights associated to these two properties that the city is very interested in acquiring, as we are in the process of designing and building our own water treatment plant. And so that's, that's one of the big end goals of myself and administration from Valley Center, is having enough water rights to, to also provide water for our residents in Valley Center as well, as we build our water treatment plant that is potentially going to be online in 2026 or 2027. So, do want to make sure that, that you know that as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Brent, thanks for the information, and you did clarify one thing, that once that, if it's annexed, then with two readings, why you could set up the residential zoning. But is it not true also that after two readings, that you could authorize a sandpit and, and rock crusher also? Isn't it the same process?
Um, no, so that would go through either a conditional use or special use. I'd have to see which process, very similar to the county, to where it would go to the planning and zoning board, and then go through that process of public notices and hearings, and then, and then go before the city council. So there would be a, a process of public notification on that as well, just like the county.
But by the same token, you can zone that any way you want, once it's annexed?
Um, once it goes through the rezoning process.
I understand that.
Yes, and, and so the initial process, it would, it would actually come into the city limits, the same zoning as the county currently has.
Okay, but that could be changed by just going through a process?
Yes, I think home rule allows, yeah, any city to come up with its own zoning codes to then follow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Not at this point. We've got a third public comment person, Penny Simpson. Good morning, Penny. Welcome.
I am Penny Simpson. I live at eighty-three fifty-five North Ridge Road, which is approximately in this vicinity. And I understand with the prior commentary that we're looking at the viability and whether or not this annexation is going to hinder development or growth in the future. That's the main question. My biggest concern is, I find it incredibly difficult, if not impossible, for you to make an informed decision about the future of this property with the information that you've been provided by the city of Valley Center. There was nothing in writing, there was no plan, no comprehensive plan, no timeline, just a verbal, oh, it's residential. Is this residential in a year? Is this residential in five years? Is this residential in fifty years? Without this information, I do not see how a decision, a valid, concrete decision and well-informed, it, it, you cannot make that decision. I think this issue begs to be turned down, delayed, some other option, because without more information, I do not see how you, you can decide this. We're, we're shooting in the dark. For all we know, they could be, they could put a chemical plant in there, they could zone it heavy industrial, they can zone it whatever they want. They're not telling us, they haven't provided the information. So how can you possibly make a decision on whether or not the future is going to hinder other properties? And so that's, that's my biggest point.
Okay.
And I would like to add, I find it very interesting that the Valley Center resolution is dated August fifteenth. The annexation request, one of them is dated same day, one of them is five days earlier. So Valley Center made no review, no thought, no contemplation of this annexation request in the first place. They looked at it and said, yeah, let's just do it. The timing is very odd on this, and I think it's fair enough to say that maybe that needs to be brought into this decision as well. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Ms. Penny Simpson? Okay, I don't see. Ma'am, the proper procedure is, is not to, or you could have signed up at the time unless the commissioner wants to, do you want to? Okay, this is, again, this is awkward. It's not in the protocol. What is the question? And we'll ask it for you. Tell me the question.
The question we have is, I've lived in this area for a
Okay, I don't need it. We don't want to have a speech about the history. What is your question?
My question is about the safety of traffic.
Okay, safety of traffic. Um, yes.
There's two planes, and each ditch is on each side, and there's no roof for escape.
Can the Valley Center person come up and just address traffic, please? And then, we don't have any more questions. I think we've all been around, well, except for Commissioner Beatty, we've all been around a lot of zoning and platting issues in our course of our history, and from my perspective, traffic is one of the main addressed issues that goes along with water, sewer, and everything else, but go ahead, Brett.
Um, no, sorry, I was trying to get the Wi-Fi to send an email. What was the direct question again?
The question is, the impact of traffic on Ridge Road?
For?
A development, this development.
Um, and so typically, what happens, at least in Valley Center, is when a proposed residential subdivision is proposed, then we analyze, here's the map, we analyze the traffic data and information via traffic counts, movement patterns, and then try to find, you know, the area that's the, the most convenient to add right turn lanes or left turn lanes, and, and make it as safe as possible. If you've seen our projects on Ford Street, Meridians that are coming up, we add right turns and left turns on, on almost all roads that we possibly can, especially when it comes to residential subdivisions, to make sure everybody gets home safely after a hard day's work or, or shopping around our beautiful area. So I don't know, you know, without having, you know, traffic data and those things. I do know, you know, again, our public safety responds to a lot of those accidents and, and, you know, crashes on Ridge Road in this area already, and, and do provide those mutual aid assistance.
Okay. Thank you, Brett.
If I could, real quick, so we did finally get the map pulled up, so thank you for that fantastic job from your staff. Here is our Suter Water Extensions west in Valley Center. As you can see, our treatment plant on the far east end of Seventy-seventh, we would go then across the river. There is one small area that, I mean, very small, I think it's, it's fifty-foot area that I was looking at on, on Cedric GIS, which the GIS mobile is fantastic, and I appreciate that. Use it multiple times a day. We actually have, besides that one small area, there's right-of-way and easements along that entire stretch, and so there's just about a fifty-foot, maybe a seventy-foot total area right along the Little Arkansas River that, that we would have to, you know, acquire or negotiate. It's the end of a cul-de-sac. Otherwise, that, from that point, all the way west is, is, is right-of-way for either the county or the city. So there is ample area and access for that. So as you can see, you know, we have analyzed this area, and like I said before, roughly three-point-five million dollars for the water and five-point-five million for the sewer. You know, this would also include, as you can see, in between on the west side of Little Arkansas and on the east side of the flood control, those, a lot of those residents, not all of them, but most of them are inside Valley Center city limits, and we don't currently provide them services. So this would be a great opportunity for us to provide incredible water quality to them, as well as sewer services.
Okay, thanks for that update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, while you're there.
Yes.
Okay. The question that was asked from the audience about safety cued something in my mind. Once you annex this, you're going to own half right-of-way of Ridge Road, which is a major arterial. Do you have in your budget to maintain Ridge Road? Because that is a very, very busy road.
Um, as far as maintain the, the ditch or the roadway?
You're going to own half of that Ridge Road, all along that entire property, once you annex it. We're transferring that to you. Are you ready to take on that responsibility and expense?
Uh, yes, absolutely. We have a great partnership, you know, with all of you, with Cedric County Public Works, and Lynn Packard, all the way from Jim Weber back to David Spear as well. So, you know, I think we have a great partnership with, with Cedric County, where we maintain, you know, a few roads that are inside Valley Center city limits that are county-owned on both sides as well, so I'm sure that we can continue those relationships with this roadway as well.
Okay, well, my question is, when, when we do major work on an arterial, it could cost up to a million dollars or so a mile.
Yep, absolutely, it does.
And I want to make sure that you're ready to take on that responsibility, because if it's not ours, we're not going to maintain it anymore.
Yes, absolutely, and we partnered before with Mill and Overlays on streets and, and those types of things as well, so we'll continue those relationships, and we absolutely will take on the maintenance of the half of our, our due diligence here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions during the public comment? I don't see any. So we will, we will close the public comment and bring the discussion back to the, to the commission and with the presenter. Any other, is there other questions or comments before we consider a vote?
Kirk Spence, Assistant County Counselor, just based on the flow of the conversation today, I would like to also supplement potential options for this situation in looking at, besides the options of making the finding that it, whether it will or it won't hinder the growth and development, based on the timing of us getting this set up for a hearing today, the county commissioners have to make a determination within thirty days after receipt of the resolution from Valley Center. Based on the timeframe, if it were preferred by the commission, this could be determined within one week as well, so it could be on next week's hearing, if the commission were interested in procuring additional information or asking questions, things of that nature. I just wanted to bring that to the commission's attention as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, any statements or questions at this point? I just, I'll, I'll comment that there's twenty cities in Cedric County, and most of them are outside the city limits of Wichita, except for Eastborough, and they all touch our county, and this is an ongoing item that happens in all the cities, and as a former Wichita City Council member, I, I fully understand and respect the issue of home rule that, that the cities enjoy, that sometimes I sure wish the county had the same privilege, but, but the county doesn't, under state, state laws, state rules. By state, we are, counties are an extension of the state government, and cities are independently incorporated, and they have home rule. And my, my trust is that, is that home rule, and I'm prepared to, in, my faith in the home, home rule, well, with Valley Center and all cities, but before I, I'll make a motion, or?
You can make a motion or a comment.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. I'll make a motion that we find that the proposed annexation either will or will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located in Cedric County, and approve the resolution consistent with the finding. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Kirk Spence, Assistant County Counselor, with your motion, Commissioner, was it to make the finding that it, it will hinder the growth and development of the area or surrounding city, or that it won't?
It will not.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify.
So your motion is that it will not?
The annexation will not hinder or prevent.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the motion that I made. Is there a second? Okay.
Second.
Chairman, I would second that with some comments.
Okay, there's a second?
Chairman, I second the motion, but I have some comments, that is.
Okay.
I, I don't know that I
Commissioner Howell, just one second. Just one second. So you have a motion and a second recorded? Okay, and we've got a couple of comments. Commissioner Howell, you, you first. Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't need to say very much. I just would like to say that based on the actual, it's a very simple question that we have today before us, is whether or not it will or will not hinder growth. I think the answer to that is, it's really up to the city. If they want to grow, they can. They say they can, and I trust what they say is real. Any opposition to that, in my opinion, is based on speculation and, and knowledge of history. I do have some concerns about those things, and I, and I, I don't like the process. I think our, our, whether it be state or local, state laws or local policies or, or regulations that gets us to do things the way we do them, I think this gets us to do things the way we do them, I think this process is not as transparent as I would like. It's not as, it doesn't communicate to the right people, and I think it's somewhat disrespectful to everyone involved that we don't have a better process to let everyone know what's going on. And I don't know that I like it, but I think that if the applicant is able to get what they want initially, if they change them, everyone has a right to change their mind. They may intend residential today and very well might put in that, some of these other things that are, you know, maybe more concerning to the community, they have the right to change their mind. And I have to trust what they say today is real. But at the end of the day, I think the process is flawed, and I don't like the way that these things play out. I think the community has a right to know what's going on, and I think we ought to be able to consider some of these things more than, more than, I feel like is, the very simple question in front of us is, do I think it impede growth? The answer is obviously no. I think the city, if they want to grow in this area, they can. And so to me, that's why I'm supporting the motion, but I do have a number of concerns. I don't like the way that this is done. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Howell, for those comments as well. This is a, it's a challenging case and conversation, particularly because we have knowledge of a previous conditional use permit that was pulled, that never came before us. If there was no conditional use permit, we wouldn't, this would be a pretty open and shut case in conversation with annexation. And that's what makes this challenging. I would say that the concept of county government trying to empower the cities, the twenty cities, with home rule, to make sure that they can make the decisions that they need for their communities and their growth plans, is an important one that has to be taken into consideration. I would also say that the conversation about residential being what's proposed there, and if there was to be another plan with a sand pit or rock crest, or whatever it may be, that the constituents in this, in what would become a protest area would have a say, that they would have the capacity to render a protest and to have, be publicly heard, and to have a conversation in Valley Center with city council and with their planning commission. So with that in mind, I just, it's very limited in scope what it is that we have to do here at the county today in regards to, does this or does this not hinder the growth of Valley Center, which is the applicant being, asking for annexation. And with that limited scope in mind, I would agree with the motion at hand, is I just don't see that we can make a determination that it would hinder growth. And I know that's a challenging conclusion for those that are, that are in the, in the area surrounding. But I would also say that it's not the last conversation that can be had. It's not, not the last public conversation that can be had. This is, this does get passed and approved that Valley Center will have, will have to do this for themselves in regards to the planning commission and the city council to entertain these conversations. But in my purview, although it's challenging, we have a very limited scope that we can deal with today, and I think we've articulated that well. So, thank you, Chairman.
And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I agree with what Commissioner Beatty said. My concern is the way the motion was presented to us, it leaves out the fact that we can also consider the proposed use, which we don't know. And that's, that's a big issue with me, because I think I already know the proposed use because of the history of this. So, the, the direction we have is, at least from the motion, is that it will not hinder the proper growth. And I agree. I don't see that it would do that. And it'd be hard to vote against that motion. But I still have the background information. I still have the idea and the knowledge that we don't know the proposed use, and that's not part of the motion. So since that's not part of the motion, and I thought it should be, I'll vote against the motion today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. And so, thank you, citizens in Valley Center represented. So I'm sure this will continue to have a new chapter, or a next chapter. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, two resolutions determining the advisibility of and authorizing the creation of a benefit district in Cedric County, Kansas, making certain findings relating there to and authorizing and providing for the making of certain road improvements there in Stonewater Edition Phases One and Two. Also, also a resolution determining the advisibility of and authorizing the creation of a stormwater drainage benefit district in Cedric County, Kansas, making certain findings relating there to and authorizing and providing for the making of certain improvements there in Stonewater Edition.
I have a question. Can we just combine H and I together, or do we have to take it separately?
I believe they need to be taken separately, because they are two separate subdivisions.
Okay.
But I'll defer to Counselor for that.
I would confer, confirm what Mr. Packer said.
All right, we're on item H. Welcome, Lynn, to the meeting.
Gorman, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Lynn Packer, your Director of Public Works and County Engineer. We are here today to present to you for consideration of three resolutions regarding special assessment benefits, District for Stonewater Edition. A lot of long title and a, three separate resolution, or not three separate resolutions, but three, three separate additions here that we're considering. Two of them are, the first two are for road improvement, local road improvements within the platted subdivision, and the third one is for overall drainage of the subdivision. I will note that this is a developer-driven special assessment project, meaning it is 100% owned by the developer this time, and he is the sole petitioner. Phase one of this, or, phase one, this subdivision is located in the southeast corner of 247th Street West and Maple. The first phase for the road improvements is highlighted in what I believe is blue up there, and that's about half of the subdivision there. The petition is in the amount of $975,000. And again, this is for the road improvements themselves. The second phase is the remaining roads within that subdivision. The, and again, these are road improvements, which is similar. It's about $965,000 is what the petition is for, and again, just covering the roads. The final, this is the entire highlighted in blue subdivision for drainage improvements, and this will be a separate benefit district that is for a total petition of $700,000. So with that, we recommend that you adopt these resolutions to create these benefit districts. Stand for any questions.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question for Justin. Do I need to read all three of these, or can I just take the recommended action and adopt the resolutions?
Good question, Commissioner Dennis, Justin Wyatt, our County Counselor. You could just simply take the recommended action. I would suggest noting, if one of the Commissioners, it may be useful for you to note in your motion to note that there were three resolutions on this item. As Mr. Packer presented the agenda item, backup materials says there are two resolutions. There are actually three. So it may be worthwhile to say, adopt all three resolutions as included in the backup materials.
Okay. Thank you. If there are, no other Commissioners want to speak, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Ask, I don't see any other questions or comments at this time, so we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt all three recommended resolutions.
I'll second that. The motion and a second to adopt one, two, and three of this benefit district. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Can you continue to have Commissioner Howell and, and Commissioner Lopez available, so I could, thank you, whoever is doing that. Thank you. All right. I don't see any questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Commissioner Lopez, you're muted.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, now.
Okay, aye.
Aye, okay.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item I, three resolutions determining the advisibility of and authorizing the creation of a benefit district in Cedric County, Kansas, making certain findings relating there to and authorizing and providing for the making of certain road improvements there in Rachel Brooks Estates Edition Phases One, Three, and Four. Also, a resolution determining the advisibility of and authorizing the creation of a stormwater drainage benefit district in Cedric County, Kansas, making certain findings relating there to and authorizing and providing for the making of certain improvements there in Rachel Brooks Estates Edition.
Okay, well done. Madam Clerk. Lynn, welcome back.
Again, for the record, Lynn Packer, your Director of Public Works and County Engineer. Item H is consideration of four resolution, four separate resolutions regarding the special assessment benefit district for Rachel Brooks Estates. This one is similar to the last one in that they have broken out the road and drainage phases of this project. You will note that it is phases one, then three, four, and then the overall drainage. Phase two is going to be private construction. It is not going to be assessed. Again, the first three phases are for local road improvements throughout the benefit district, and then the final resolution is for overall pond drainage improvements. This subdivision for Rachel Brooks Estates is located in the northwest corner of 167th West and Central. It is for the far west portions of the roads, is what this special assessment covers. It has a petition amount of $1.15 million. The next phase, which is going to jump to phase three, the Birch Court, I will make a note, if you can see on the, on the screen there or in the handouts I gave you, Birch Court is going to be the private construction that's up there. So phase three covers the southern portion of this subdivision. It is, has a value of, the petition, of $1.1 million total. And then, the third paving petition is for Kelby Street, which is that far connection that's actually going to connect the subdivision to the east, and that is a street petition for $425,000. The final petition is going to be for the drainage, overall drainage, as you can see on the graphic in front of you. This is, includes that pond, and has a 1.775, I believe, is the petition amount for the overall. Once again, this is a developer petition, and is, they are single, they own 100% of the lots, and are initiating these special assessments before any lots are sold. We recommend you adopt the resolutions. If you have any questions, I stand available.
Okay. Probably need to make sure we're clear on the motion if we're at that point. Any questions at this time? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in this case, it's going to be four resolutions, and our information said three. Unless there is any questions from any of the Commissioners, I move that we adopt the four resolutions as briefed.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell? Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work. Hey, can we take a ten-minute break, please? We'll come back at 11:05. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do that effectively.
But we may end up having to pay overtime. We may work people longer hours. And that, we're trying to do this in order to be able to improve morale from a lot of people. But if you give someone mandatory overtime, or you tell them that they're salaried, you've got to work longer, that impacts morale of those people. So for everybody that's off, there's going to be a trade off, both from the taxpayers are paying for someone that's not working, and we're ending up paying overtime or extending a salaried person's hours, correct?
We may have those instances. I do think many of these folks already take time off today, so this is something that is currently being managed out in the organization. But I'll let Sheena speak to the morale side of things.
When parents go out on leave now, we run into that same scenario, that someone may be covering for those services or job duties while they're out. It's a temporary coverage that we do. I think what we can all agree on is that when someone goes out for bonding time with a child or the birth of a child, it's not going to be long term.
Yeah. Well, I can just speak from a little bit of experience in my life, okay? I worked in the military, as everyone knows, for a lot of years. And most of my career, I was covered under a thing called Personal Reliability Program. So if you did anything wrong whatsoever, you lost your clearance and you don't go to work. One of the squadrons I was in, the OSI, came in and hit the squadron and pulled out about 50% of the squadron. So those of us that didn't use marijuana, we're now working 12 on and 12 off for a very, very long period of time until we could get people in or get their clearances back. Did that affect me, my morale? Absolutely. That affected my morale and everybody else that worked every day. So I care about the people that are behind, that are actually doing the job each and every day, and what that impact is on the morale. So I believe there's a financial cost to this that we don't know. And I think that it can impact morale, because we don't know how many people that we're going to be doing this for. Does that mean I'm opposed to this? No, I'm not opposed to doing this. I think we need to take a look a little closer on the time, because I was a little disappointed that our option today was eight weeks, and I think that is more than generous. I would go with four weeks, and we can always go up in the future, next year, if we find that we really need to go to six weeks, or eight weeks, or whatever we need to do in the future. But if we started eight weeks, we can't go down. So.
It was difficult.
It'd be difficult. So as we move through this, and other commissioners have an opportunity to speak, I would support a motion to adopt this at four weeks, but beyond that, you're going to have a hard time getting my vote. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty or Commissioner Lopez comment? Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Lopez, we're deferring.
Okay. Okay, well, okay. I just want to, real quick, just comment on some of the things that Commissioner Dennis just said. I think there's another way to look at some of what you brought up. If we're talking about cost of citizens and what this potentially could do, you know, we've seen in the past where we have lost so many of our employees, where we've had to shut down different things within our juvenile correction system, because we just don't have the staff to do it. And so one of the reasons we've talked about this is, how do we do better? We brag about our benefits a lot here at the county, but one thing that we've been really lacking, and we have the opportunity now to lead on when it comes to large organizations in this community, but across the state, is with parental leave. So if we talk about cost to citizens, I think it could almost be made, you know, an argument to be made the other way, is what could happen if we don't pass this, and then we lose someone down the line, because they don't have the time that they need to take off with their children, when, you know, they arrive to their home, or whether they give birth, whatever that might be. But I do think there's another side to that argument, and I think Sheena really hit on something important, that we know when people will take off this time, that it's capped at eight weeks. So we know people will be coming back. And so the, what you had mentioned with marijuana use, and I know that you've told me that story before, those people were no longer able to do that job. It wasn't an eight week period, but more of a long term. And so I do think that this is a little bit of a different situation. I'm really excited that I saw Tanya Buckingham, our Register of Deeds, sent us an email with some letters from her staff and being supportive of this. Those are both men and women that work for her. And I love that those letters came in, because I think it just proves the point that this is something that's so needed and desirable for our organization, especially an organization of this size. And when I ran for the seat originally, one thing I was asked repeatedly, over and over and over again, was, what are we going to do to attract and retain our young professionals to this community? And I don't think it's something that one organization can tackle, but I think we, as a community, can do better at taking care of young people that want to stay here, that want to move here. And one aspect of that is, young people tend to be, you know, have children, they have young families. And if we can be more desirable of an organization to work for, or have people who want to remain working for us, this is a great opportunity to do that. I think eight weeks is the appropriate amount. It takes up to six weeks just to heal from giving birth. And so I think it's really the right path forward. And I think that leading, Central County leading this, when we look at all, you know, other organizations, we talked about our staff meeting when we discussed this, the city of Wichita, or other groups that don't have these, is, I mean, we can lead on this. This is an exciting thing. This should be, I feel like it should be an easy win for all of us, because it touches so many lives. And as our organization, people start to retire, the people that are going to be replacing those people are going to tend to be younger. And so we do need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to be inclusive to those families and their needs. And so I'm so excited that we have this on the agenda today. When it's appropriate, I would love to make the motion as is for eight weeks. And I'm just really happy that we get to have this conversation today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of questions and a comment. So what does she, Sheena, do you see as the main purpose of a parental leave policy? Is it to attract, retain, morale, all of these things? I mean, what is the main, what are we shooting for here?
All of it. I think with this policy, of course, we would like to have people with paid time. But I think it's the message that the organization sends to the employee, is that we care, we're family oriented, and we want you to have that time with your family, so that you come back as a better employee for us.
When people do take time off after having a baby now, they're doing FMLA, correct? So for the public's interest, we have no parental leave policy now, correct? So they take FMLA, and they're allowed to take off, how long legally are they allowed to take off, or do we allow them to take off without pay?
If they're eligible, 12 weeks.
12 weeks. So when people don't take the full 12 weeks, what typically is their motivating factor for returning to work early?
To get a paycheck.
They gotta, they gotta make a living. They gotta pay. Would you venture to say that it impacts productivity when they come back two weeks, three weeks after birth, because they have to put food on the table?
Absolutely.
It impacts productivity as well. I know the productivity side is hard to quantify. I know it is, but it certainly would impact productivity. The second question I had, and I'm not sure who could answer this. Tom, you might be able to help with it. Every position in 45, 46 departments says who county government is important. And this would have impact on every department. This would have incredible impact to our capacity to perform service and some of our public safety. That would be my concern, is I want to, I want to really understand, how does this impact public safety if EMS, or fire, or sheriffs, or 911, or you name it, eight weeks? Does that, do we have, the leaders of those organizations, do they have any hesitancy with eight weeks? Or they have concern with this policy? Have they stated anything? I think it's important that we understand that before we even delve any further into conversation.
That's a good question, Commissioner. And all four of those entities that you just mentioned, we talked to the department heads, sheriff, EMS chief, fire chief, and communications chief, Alora Forchy. All of them, and all of the four similarities that they have, they are all at staffing levels that are less critical than two years ago, but they still have staffing challenges. So the question was, if we move forward with this kind of policy, can you tolerate it on a short end, and, but recognizing what the long picture is? And all four of them see this and agree with Sheena, that this is extremely valuable for retention and recruitment. And they see that side of it. All four of them have some concerns on the short term here, depending on how many of their employees use the benefit. That it's going to make a staffing issue that they have currently even more challenging. But all of them, all four of them, support this policy. All four of them see the long term benefit of this, and are willing to shore it up on the short term to hopefully hire and retain more people.
Very helpful. So a couple of thoughts. We, I think, some of you know that my wife and newborn baby, as of yesterday, are in the hospital right now. It doesn't fall short on me that my family is afforded an opportunity that a lot of families don't have. So my wife is able to go home and stay home. She doesn't work. She's a stay at home mom. We have over 35 people in my family that are living here in this city that are willing to help whenever we need a babysitter. In fact, my parents get offended if we don't ask them to babysit. I am keenly aware that I'm afforded an opportunity that a lot of people don't have. And that is kind of venturing into my logic, as I consider this, is those people that don't have that luxury that I have. Those people that have to go back to work, because they've got to put food on their table. And that's a, that's a decision in my mind that, that we can lead on. Commissioner Lopez made a comment about leading, and I think we have an opportunity here, as one of the largest employers in this community, to lead, to set a standard, and to send a message that we are about pro-family, that we believe in family, we believe in, in that bonding time. We believe that bringing children into this world is an important thing and a good thing, and parents being able to stay home with those babies is equally important. And I think we can lead there. We have 2,700 plus employees in this organization. We're making an organizational decision here about how do we lead an organization, acting almost as if CEOs right now, saying, how do we best do this for our staff? How do we build morale? How do we, how do we send a message? Who are we and who do we want to be? And we can govern that with small policies, just like this, as sending a message to our staff, saying, we want you to be, we want good morale, we want you to take care of those babies, we want this bonding time, this is important, this is what we stand for. So I'm grateful that we're all here. I think everyone today is saying, we're going to do something. And we're going to send a message to this community and to our staff that we are pro-family. I'm happy to have the conversation on time. I am favorable of eight weeks, because I'm very much aware of what eight weeks does, and the need for eight weeks, particularly for those that are, that are having the babies, birthing these babies. And I'm also very favorable for the foster care addendum to this. Something that's very near and dear to my heart, the need to reach and promote foster parents in this capacity. So you've answered my questions. I know the heart of this policy. I think we have an opportunity to lead the 2,700 plus employees of Sedgwick County Government, and make a statement. We're trying to make statements for tax policy and other things. We are making statements, and we're leading from this bench, and this is an opportunity to do it another time, to lead in a big way. So I'll stand for other comments and questions, but I'll be as supportive of Commissioner Lopez's motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I am listening in, if you can hear me. I'd like to make a couple of comments and maybe have a question here.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Did Sheena say that roughly 13% of employers provide some type of rental leave policy?
Yes, that was established in a report by Family Forward Workplaces, and that's regarding private industry.
And of those 13%, we don't really have any averages in terms of what those policies are, do we? Do we have any data saying, here's kind of the high end and the low end, but here's the average of all those policies of 13%? Do we know what that, what that average is?
No, it was, I was just referencing an article.
Okay. Well, okay, so it's no surprise to my colleagues and all that. We have talked about this for quite a long time. And I know recently, we had a staff meeting, and there was consensus for this particular policy that's before us right now. I can tell you that there are some other ideas that are out there. One of my concerns is, is that I don't think the public generally knows about this, even though it is technically, we talked about this in a staff meeting, so it's a public open meeting. I don't think it has much visibility. I'm not sure if other boards talked about it. I know mine did. I have some feedback from that. But I guess I would love to hear from the people we serve, not just the employees, but our taxpayers too, and business owners. I have been asking a lot of people their thoughts on, you know, whether we should have a policy, and what should that policy be. And I think there's this kind of a spectrum of ideas. Some people don't think we should do it. Some people think we should do it and have a very generous policy. But if I was going to take the average of all of my research, asking people, I do think we should do something. I do think we should be competitive and do something. I just don't want to start at the top. And I say that, I have to, I have asked questions. I'm not sure who else knows what other entities around the community are providing. For example, Coke, Coke Industries, what does Textron provide, what does Spirit do, 259, and City Wichita, and other cities around the county, you know, what is kind of the normal among those comparables? Those are our competition, perhaps, maybe even more so than the state of Kansas or Johnson County. And among that group I just listed, most of them have some small amount of benefit, some of them have not. For example, the city of Wichita has no benefit right now. And 259, I believe they provide a benefit for paternity, but not, not paternity. 260, that's my, that's my school district in Derby. They don't have anything right now, but they're considering a one week policy, potentially in their next union contract. I understand that's, that's being discussed. The city of Wichita has no leave right now. And like in Johnson County, for example, while they do have a parental leave policy, it doesn't seem to cover, I don't think it covers foster care. I may be off on that. I'm off my memory at this point. I do know that their benefit is for four weeks, not more than four weeks. And so, you know, as I've looked, even the state of Kansas has a policy, I don't think the state includes foster care. And it is a bifurcated policy that says, if you're a secondary, you get four weeks. If you're primary caregiver, you get, you get eight weeks. But it doesn't give necessarily everybody eight weeks. And so, you know, doing all of our comparables, what's before us today, I'd say is on the very generous end of, especially a starting place. And I, that's my concern. I appreciate Commissioner Dennis's comments. If we are going to go in this direction, and I do think we should start. I don't know that I want to see it start so high that we can't roll it backwards, because I think once we go high, it's going to be hard to unwind this. And we don't, we don't really know how many people will participate. We don't know what the real cost is. The fiscal note, I heard that people say they don't think there's really a way to calculate a fiscal note. I calculated what I think is a reasonable method of calculating that, and I think it could be a million dollars a year. So maybe I'm way off, but for us to provide a benefit where people can stay home and be paid, and not provide services, there's a cost to taxpayers, one way or the other. There has to be. And I think it's illogical to say there's no cost. So there is a cost. And so having said all of that, again, I'm supportive of a policy. And just so everyone listening might know, there is, you know, the idea of overarching policy that's called parental leave, that's what we're discussing today. But another way of looking at this, and some companies do provide different benefits for a birth parent versus just a, you know, a non-birth parent. And what I mean by that is, and, you know, Commissioner Lopez has actually kind of alluded to this in our comments, there's a healing that needs to happen for the one that went through a birth process. And so, you know, if you consider that, that need as a, as a physical need, then our policy should recognize that as a, as a need. I would rather see this policy presented to the commission and adopted. It's both a bonding policy, bonding leave policy, that's for foster care, adoptions and births, for everybody, and the house in addition to their family. But then I think it ought to be a medical leave policy for the healing aspect of the birthing, of the birthing parent. And again, in conjunction with the bonding leave, for example, if we provided four weeks for a natural birth, and six weeks for a cesarean, for example, maybe we should, maybe we should not do that. But in conjunction with bonding leave, that would be six weeks paid time off, two weeks is for bonding, and four weeks is for healing. And I think that's a more reasonable, personally, I think it's a reasonable starting point. Well, here's the, here's the deal. I understand I'm probably being a minority amongst my colleagues. I think the community needs to weigh in on this a little bit more than they have in the past. And I would really like to see this deferred. So Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to defer this to our next meeting. Or should I say, I think I should defer this to a meeting not less than two weeks away.
Okay. That's a motion. You can't see this, but there's two lights that are on. So there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Howell, I think your motion fails for lack of a second, but we do have a couple more comments. All right, Commissioner Dennis.
Chairman, I'm going to step away. I apologize for that. And if there's a motion to adopt this policy as currently written, I would be opposed to that, but I'm not going to be able to vote, because I have to step away. I appreciate the chance to speak today, and I'm sorry I can't be there for the remaining part of this. And since it's not willing to be deferred, I guess I'll have to let the will of the body dictate what goes forward. Thank you so much for the chance to speak, and have a great rest of your meetings, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howell, are you going to be able to be online to vote?
I will not. I am about to enter into a place where I can no longer be part of this meeting. And this is very important to me. And I apologize for having to miss. I wanted to participate as much as I possibly could, but if this will not be deferred, then I guess I'll just trust the majority of the commissioners to do what's best for the county.
Well, we normally defer to the commissioner that wants to defer a motion. We've got a history of doing that. And I hate to have one commissioner that has strong feelings about something, not have an opportunity to vote on it, and he's going to step away. And I don't have, I don't know that there's an emergency to pass this today. So I will second the motion, but that allows us to continue discussion a little bit, if that's okay.
There's a motion and a second. So.
Commissioner Lopez, raise your hand.
Yep. So we have Commissioner Lopez and Commissioner Beatty.
I'd still like, I had my light on to speak about something else.
Okay. All right. There's a motion and a second, and you have comments.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This solves part of the problem with a new child in any community, wherever they're at in our departments. But I've got an issue that I brought up time and time again, and that's childcare. So this solves a little piece of the issue with our employees. But once, whatever this time period is, whether it's four, six, or eight weeks, is over, now that employee has a huge problem, because they can't find childcare. And so are we even going to get them back after whatever the period of time is? Are they going to be looking for a job that provides childcare? And I've challenged our staff to come up with a solution to this. Now, just last week, I was sitting down, talking with Textron, and they're going to build a huge childcare facility for their employees. And they even mentioned that maybe we could partner with them to help staff this thing, once it gets built. So no matter what we solve today, that's only a temporary solution to the long term issue that we have. We work 24/7, 365. We have to have childcare 24/7, 365, or at the end of the, whatever this bonding period ends, ends, they're going to be in a crisis. So I know that I've brought it up before. I'm going to continue to bring it up, that I think childcare is really our big issue following this. So again, and I apologize, because I didn't know Commissioner Howell was going to fall off. That's why I didn't mention that I'd support his motion. Again, we normally listen to a commissioner when they want to defer it, and if he can't be here to vote, I would rather that we had all the commissioners, because I think this is going to pass, okay, in some form. But I'd like to have all the commissioners have their opportunity to vote on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Sarah, are you? Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I would just, I have a few things to say, but I'm going to start with the deferment of this. We've talked about this policy realistically since I've started. This isn't something new. We just had a whole staff meeting on it. We know how he's going to vote, because he just said he would vote no. I think it would be really sending the wrong message to our staff if we defer this, because this is a conversation we've had so much. And like you said, Commissioner Dennis, this will most likely pass. Whether, you know, what that looks like and how it passes, I don't know, but something along these lines is going to pass. So if we know how the commissioner's going to vote, we've had this information for quite some time. We even had a full breakdown of all of this in our staff meeting not long ago. We can all go back and watch that, and see what everybody's comments are again, if we would like to. But I think deferring this today sends a really bad message to, to our staff. I think there was numerous women who reached out to me after that staff meeting, who were so disheartened by the way that conversation went, and how, like, the comments that were made, that this would be impacting so many lives, and just how derogatory some of that got, was really painful, not just for me, as the only woman on this bench, but for a lot of our staff members. And so I, I would be really, I would be personally frustrated if we defer this, because the commissioner's not here. I would also say that I can't imagine if there was something that I've known about for months coming down the line, if I asked to defer it because I couldn't make part of a meeting, that that would go over well. Maybe not with the bench, but I would imagine that I would get all kinds of emails, and people who would be unbelievably upset with me, that I would put off county business, because I had to be at something, even something as important as a funeral, which is why I showed up and was on a Zoom meeting the day after I gave birth to my twins, because I couldn't imagine the ridicule that I would have personally received, had I not done that. And so I just think deferring this sends a bad message, not just to staff, but just in general, of how we treat women specifically. So I just want to put those comments out there, but then I would also like to address some of the few things that Commissioner Howell brought up. One, about the employees in private industry and what they're doing. Now, there's a lot of things that we cannot compete with when it comes to private industry. Pay, as an example, is not something that we're ever going to be able to compete with. And so we have, when we're asking people to work for us, it's because they genuinely care about our mission in serving people. Our job at the county is to serve people. And so if we are hiring people that genuinely care, they know that they're going to come in and make under what they could make at a private institution. That's the reality of it. And so saying that we shouldn't do something, because maybe private industry's not doing it, well, this is another example of how we can lead in another area, and offer better benefits in another area. And that's one thing that I've heard repeatedly, but how great it is that we can get out to people who want to, who are looking for a job, is our benefits. And I know I've heard also repeatedly, that a lot of young folks don't care necessarily as much about benefits, because they don't understand the importance, maybe, of great health insurance and all these other things. Well, this is something that I think everybody gets. It's so important that we do something along these lines. I also think it's, you know, Commissioner Beatty brought up a really great point about how thankful he is that his wife gets to stay home. And congratulations, Commissioner Beatty and your family. It's so exciting, welcoming a beautiful baby boy yesterday. You know, I haven't always had that privilege. When I had my first daughter, I went back to work within a week. When I had my second daughter, I quit my job, because I didn't want to go back to work within a week. And I would hate to put our staff in a position where they feel like they would have to do something, because they have to have a paycheck, to support not only them, but, you know, their new child. You talked about how this, you know, all these issues when it comes to foster care system. We don't really get to do a whole lot with foster care, because that's a state program. But what we can do, we should do. And this is a great way that we can say, it's important that we recognize people who want to become foster parents, that we tell people how great it is to foster. And we do everything we can as an organization to make it as easy as possible for those folks who want to foster, to be able to have a kid come in, have some bonding time, make sure they're comfortable with where they're at, and do, you know, everything that it takes. I couldn't even imagine how hard that job would be to become a foster parent. And I also think it's really important that we, when we talk about a primary versus secondary parenting, or a woman versus man, I mean, there's so many different ways that I feel like we could be held liable if we start down that path. People who adopt, they might not always be a man and a woman who adopts together. So how do we determine who's the primary parent in that situation? Or sometimes, there's, a father will be the primary parent. When we just had our twins, my husband had three days that he got to take off. And so we were still in the hospital for two weeks. What would we have done? so we were still in hospital for two weeks. What would we have done? I mean, thankfully, he was in a position where he could take some time without all the pay, but I think it's really important that we discuss some of those things, too, because it's not always, you know, a husband and a wife who have a child. And we can't act like that every situation is going to be the same and fit in this mold, and this is why we have to do it. So I think it's just really important that we continue with what we have in front of us, that we don't defer this, and that we realize just how great of a benefit this is to our staff, and hopefully, like we've been saying this whole time, but like to reiterate what Commissioner Beatty said, that we get to lead in this space, and it's so important. So I hope that we don't defer this. Again, I think that sends a really bad message when we've had this information for as long as we've had it, and we've already had the staff meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. As we're shaping this policy, I would, I want to guard against, I think everyone knows that the healing period for a natural birth versus a C-section versus, I mean, I think everybody knows logically that these are different experiences. But I just want to interject that it's none of our business how a baby comes into this world. It's none of our business. I don't want to get into the business of saying that we give more paid time off for a natural birth versus this, or a C-section versus this. I just, frankly, it's none of our business as an employer. I think that we need to be as straightforward and as simplistic as we possibly can in what we're trying to accomplish here. I do not want to intervene on that level to get into the business of trying to understand how every individual is having a baby in our organization. I don't think that's our business. I will also remind, this is a workforce issue. This is very much a workforce issue. We are attracting a younger demographic, an upcoming demographic of workforce clientele. This is a benefit that they will see as a reason to come and work and a reason to stay with Sedgwick County Government. And this is particularly important in public safety. Every organization and department's important here, but in public safety, when workforce matters, if we're getting to a child that is drowning, or choking, or a heart attack, that matters. Making sure that we have enough people to do the job and do it well when people's lives are in jeopardy, it matters. And this is just one more thing we can do, aside from compensation, to recognize the staff that are doing this job. We can lead here. We can legitimately lead here and set a tone that I think that our organization will reap benefits for a long time by decisions that we're making with this policy. So that's my comments, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I agree that we need to lead in this. I agree that public safety is our number one concern. It always is our highest priority. That's another reason why I'm pushing for childcare at some point, because public safety is 24/7/365. So, but to go back to the motion that's at hand, I think it's a little disrespectful, he's already dropped off, that we don't allow him to vote one way or the other on this. I don't believe we need a huge discussion if it comes back in a week or whenever we can get it back on the schedule, because we've already heard all the arguments. The only decision we have when it comes back is it's going to be four, six, or eight weeks. That's the only decision I think that is still open. I did not hear anybody speak against this, but I have to respect my fellow commissioners, too, that said, hey, I want to be able to vote on this, and he's had to drop off because he's at a funeral. So that's, I didn't second the motion initially, because I didn't know that he was going to drop off right after the motion. And, but once I found that out, that's the only reason I seconded it. I would like all five commissioners to lead on this rather than four commissioners. So that's why I support deferring it for a week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other comments at this time, so there's a motion and a second to defer. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chairman Meitzner?
Well, my motion, my vote is no. So it's a tie vote. So I think by default, it's, carries or doesn't carry, we defer.
Chairman, if there's not a majority vote, it would not carry, and so the motion failed.
All right, motion doesn't carry. So hearing all the discussion, I would just want to reaffirm that today, if somebody wants to, they have the Family Medical Leave Act, which is whatever, but economically, a person can use their vacation pay and sick pay and anything else up to whatever days. And then after that, they're not, they don't get paid, correct?
Correct.
So under this policy, no matter if it's four, six, or eight weeks, they would be paid, let's say if it's four weeks, they'd be paid four weeks. If they chose to stay longer, they could use vacation and sick pay after that, or exercise or FML, and stay off for as long as they want without pay. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. It's, that was for my benefit, but also for others that may be listening. So listening to the discussion, I hear four weeks, and I hear staff recommendation, eight weeks. I totally respect that it might be difficult to go backwards, and four might, so trying to maybe split the difference, I'm willing to make a motion that we adopt this policy and for a six-week period with a review process mandatory by HR that at the end of '24, we receive an analysis on what happened, the impact. I said six.
Second.
Second? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other comment?
I have a comment.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm not sure now how I'm going to vote on this, and I'm going to be just very clear because I don't think six weeks is enough. And I think if we're going to do this, we should do eight weeks. That's what has been recommended by staff. We've had, I mean, we get so many things recommended by staff, and a lot of times, we will vote against maybe what we're wanting because we're, we want to make sure we're following our professional staff. This is what our professional staff within HR has presented to us. Public safety has said that they agree that eight weeks is appropriate. We've heard from a registrar of deeds who also agrees that this is appropriate. And I, again, just want to be very clear that we are a board of men making decisions on parental leave that's going to, at the end of the day, impact women more than it is a man. And I don't know if anybody else has given birth, but I can tell you that there is a huge difference between six and eight weeks. And I would also state that if someone comes back too early, their mind is going to be wondering what's going on with their baby at home, and not necessarily being as productive as they can in the position. And so because of that, I'm going to make a secondary motion that we adopt this resolution as is with an eight-week limit on paid parental leave.
Okay.
Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yep.
I'm trying to read some tea leaves here. So, Justin, if this thing goes 2-2, what happens?
Commissioner Beatty, if there's two votes, then there's no action taken because there would not be a majority vote.
Okay. So we're balancing right now. We don't want to defer, and it feels as if we might be at a 2-2. What, do you flip a coin, Justin? Is that what you want? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to move this thing forward in a way that I believe that eight weeks is appropriate. I believe it sends a strong sign and a strong signal. But we're not going to defer this. We're going to, we're going to make some decisions today, so I want to get action and move us forward. So I'll stand for more comments and questions, but I want to move us forward. We made a motion to move this thing forward today, so I want to get us forward. I don't want another 2-2.
So, yeah, there was a motion and a second for the policy with six weeks, with the slight add-on that it's reviewed and brought back to us after an annual review. And then there's a substitute motion that it's a policy as written for eight weeks. That has not been seconded yet.
I'll second it and see where we're going.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
So it's second, same motion that I seconded, now it's been seconded twice, is that correct?
No, you seconded, you seconded the six-week motion. There's a substitute motion for the original policy recommendation by staff for eight weeks, and by Sarah, and that's been seconded by Commissioner Beatty.
I can't always hear what Sarah says.
Right, yeah, I know. It is a little muffled, but it's, you gotta, I gotta watch her lips when she's talking. Okay. So the motion, the substitute motion is adopt a policy as written for, which includes the staff recommendation of eight weeks, and that substitute motion has been seconded. Any other comments? Okay, being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
I want everyone to know that I'm not against this proposal, okay? But I'm voting no.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. So the motion carries, and we will look at it, well, we won't look at it in a year from now, but I assume that we will get a status report as time goes on. Reminding that last year, we might have had 50 to 60 people would have utilized it out of the 2,700, and assuming the percentages are the similar, it'll be something like that. So, okay, well, thanks, Sheena, for all the work and.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on August 31st, 2023.
Hi, Joe.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The August 31st regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts has resulted in four items we bring before you this morning. Our first item is NetSmart Software Upgrade for CommCare. Recommendation to accept the quote from NetSmart Technologies Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $95,400, and is for a contract period that will end June 30th of 2024. Item number four, Rental Uniform and MAT Program for Various Departments. This recommendation is to utilize the Omnia Contract R-BB-19002 with Centos Corporation, and that will establish contract pricing effective November 1st, 2023, through October 31st, 2025. Item number three is a 3/4 ton, four-wheel-drive, single-wheel, rear axle, crew cab, standard bed truck for Fleet and Sheriff's Office. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Allen Samuels of Hutcheson Incorporated. They're doing business as Allen Samuels Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, and that's in the amount of $51,879. And our final item, item number four, is Sell Bright for the Sheriff's Office. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Sell Bright Incorporated for a total amount of $54,450. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, Commissioners, have you seen the presentation from Joe on the recommended items? Any questions, comments? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Second. There's motion and a second. No questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, at this time, we will recess the Board of County Commission meeting, and we'll call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda?
Nobody signed up to address the public, address us on the public agenda, so we'll move to the next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of August 16th, 2023.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the minutes of August 16th. Are there any questions or comments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the fire, fire meeting minutes of August 16th, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item B, A Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners Sitting as the Governing Body of the Fire District Number One, Adopting a Personnel Policy for Paid Parental Leave.
Sheena, good afternoon, morning. I've got two minutes. It's still morning.
It's still morning. Good morning, Commissioner Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. This is the same policy that we just went through a few minutes ago regarding our paid parental leave.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions that we haven't already asked? Entertainer motion by anybody?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the same resolution for the eight-week parental leave as we did for the rest of the county.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
I still have the same concerns, but aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Good. Motion carries. Any other, or next item, please.
Other?
Anything need to come before the Board of the Fire District? I don't see any, so we will adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One, and we will return to the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Next item, please.
Consent agenda?
Chairman and Commissioner, good morning. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items L through double letter AE.
Okay. Okay, you got it. Good. All right. Any questions on consent items L through AE? That's almost like AI, artificial intelligence. Okay, I don't see any questions. I'll make a motion, we approve consent items L through AE.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, does anybody have anything to report from their committees they serve on? And I don't see any right now, so, okay, next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other? Commissioner Beatty?
Chairman, if I may, I'd like to announce the arrival of a new constituent, well, he's constituent, yeah, a new resident in District Four. My wife and I had a new baby, Briar Russell Beatty, eight pounds, 20 and 20.25 inches. So he's a heavy little tank. But my wife is amazing, absolutely amazing. And he's healthy. I'm just grateful to God for a healthy baby. So we got a new one in District Four.
You could have done that under committee reports, since you've got this family.
Well, we're making a committee, that's for sure.
You're just on the committee, you're not the chair. Okay, hey, congratulations. We all were concerned for you all weekend long, kind of, and I'm glad. So hope for a speedy recovery for everybody. Any other about that? So, thank you, and congrats. Anything else under other? I don't see, I do see Commissioner Lopez is smiling. She's happy for you, I think. So, okay. Nothing else under other. Executive Committee, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 12:30 for discussions relating to Sedgwick County Information Technology Security Manners and Strategies, where the discussion of such security measures at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures that protect Sedgwick County as an organization, public buildings or facilities of Sedgwick County, and the information systems of Sedgwick County. And that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room at, actually, 12:32.
Is it 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
30 minutes. Okay.
That's correct, 30 minutes, 12:32.
Because we have to go up to four, six, okay. Because we have to go up to four-six, okay? So motion and a second? Oh, Sarah, yeah, Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. So while I'm back in the office, and my doctor has approved me to be here, I have concerns about being around, well, Commissioner Dennis, and specifically Commissioner Beatty as well, with a new baby, so how are we gonna do that? I don't want to be close to either of them, if that's possible.
Is it, is available to put her on a phone?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, we will call your, we'll call your cell phone, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion and a second to, for thirty minutes? And, all right. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty? Chairman Meitzner?
Aye, and we're gonna, the reason we're going a little long, we're gonna go up to the sixth floor. All right, thank you.
You ready to get started?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, stand by for a 10 count.
Quick. We gotta have those outs here.
Okay, here we go. In 10, nine, eight, seven, six...
Okay, we have returned from executive session. Couple minutes later, I apologize. And any other business need to come before the board today? I don't see any, so with that, we stand adjourned.
Took no binding action.